Appropriation. Should I wait until we're on screen? Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is the Planning Commission.
Recording in progress.
Now, good morning, everyone. This is the Planning Commission meeting of February 19th, 2025. We begin our agendas with a salute to the flag, if you will join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Villalobos, will you include our TV coverage announcement and proceed to the roll call?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Good morning to everyone on the commission and everyone joining us today. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB TV, Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, Ascendence Valley, San Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and YouTube channel and will be available for download in a day or two. Moving on to roll call, Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Commissioner Park.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
And Chair Bridley.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a time in our agenda when we actually take public comment from items that are not otherwise scheduled on the agenda, and our agenda today has one item, which is the cannabis ordinance amendment. So does anybody online for public comments?
Forty-one joining us online. If you'd like to speak for items not on today's agenda, raise your virtual hand and I'll call on you. And seeing no hands raised.
Thank you. So with that, I will close the public comment portion and we will move on to our standard agenda. We don't get a director's report or anything, huh? Wow.
Not for special hearings.
Oh. We're happy you are here, though, Director Plowman and Secretary Wilson. Okay, so for our standard agenda, we have one item. Mr. Villalobos, please read that.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The following is a hearing under request of the County Santa Barbara Planning and Development Department for the county planning commission to consider an ordinance case number 24 ORD 12 and determine that the ordinance is exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to section 15265 of the state guidelines for the implementation of SEQA and pursuant to section 15162 after considering the P E I R that the board of supervisors certified on February 6, 2018, no subsequent environmental impact report or negative declarations shall be required.
Thank you. And because this is an ordinance memo, we don't have to do ex parte disclosures, so we will go straight to our staff report, correct? Mr. Briggs.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just wanted to make a few introductory comments.
Head of staff, please.
I have to get on the microphone if I'm going to be here. So the planning commission's had a number of meetings on the cannabis ordinance and the board has given direction at two different time, in two different timeframes, most recently providing direction in January regarding the requirement for PCOS or carbon filtration scrubbers, that kind of thing, in, to be added to the mixed light facilities. So I think there's been just a lot of changes along the way, and now we're in a place where we have this board directive and recommendation that is consistent with what the PC has been seeking each time a permit comes through the process to try and ensure that we can reduce odor in the carbon area. So I think that's sort of like the, the premier part of this program, right, is that requirement to add those facilities to these grows right now. And the planning commission had a lot of conversation and has agreed on most things, but there's just a few details to work out. But I just sort of wanted to set the stage about that because it's been unusual process. And I think we're probably in a good place to move forward and get the commission's direction on the rest of the items that are outstanding. So I really want to thank your, thank you for your time on the 31st and the focus that you provided to get us to this point where we, I think we can wrap things up and then move it along to the board.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question for Director Plowman or can we continue to staff report? Yes, Commissioner Park.
I wanted to supplement your remarks. I think we're all aware that, that sometimes there are messages that come out that aren't verbalized in staff reports and so forth. But they can be very important. It appears to me that staff, enforcement staff, is very enthusiastic about this project and doing it right. And that for the first time, really, we have a, kind of an integrated whole idea of how to address odor, both with the scrubbers and so forth, and then with the improved complaint system and all that. And that sends a message to me. I think it sends an important message to the public, the enthusiasm of staff, Mr. Briggs, and showing us things like the nasal ranger and all this and that. It makes that same message and it's really important and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Martinez, your lights on. Did you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, Mr. Briggs, let's proceed with the staff report.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good morning. Aaron Briggs, Deputy Director of the Energy Minerals Cannabis and Compliance Division. And with me today, I have Ms. Petra Leva next to me, who is our compliance supervisor for cannabis. And online, we have Ms. Karina Venegas Martin, who has been doing the bulk of the written work and will be available to answer questions. And then, of course, we have two staff from GeoSynTech, who are technical experts on odor and our technology and would also be available to answer questions as needed. So let's get started. Purpose of today's hearing, why are we here? Well, we're here so that staff can receive input from the commission on the updated ordinance amendment package to address any remaining issues and answer any of the commission's questions. And ultimately, our, our main goal is to finalize the planning commission's recommendation to the board on the draft ordinance amendments so that staff can take that recommendation to the board on March 18th. I have a few slides here that are going to articulate the items where, at the January 29th hearing, your commission was able to come to a consensus and pretty much unanimously agree that you're in support of these concepts. And we'll just walk through these quickly and then we can, I've got some other slides that are going to help facilitate us talking about the issues that are still outstanding. So in summary of the items that you were able to come to consensus on at the last hearing, number one, obviously required that operators utilize multi-technology carbon filtration or equivalent in all odor abatement plans, require that operators phase out the use of vapor phase or misting systems, that odor for the purposes of compliance should be measured at the property line, require that all odor abatement plans be certified by a California licensed professional engineer rather than by a certified industrial hygienist, that runtime meters be used on all odor abatement equipment to ensure that it's operational, that compliance staff perform quarterly inspections for the first year after odor abatement plan implementation and annual inspections thereafter, that any corrective actions for compliance go through the tiered response that's articulated in the ordinance amendments, establishment of a 12-month implementation period. And so for the inland area, it would be 12 months after board adoption. And then in the coastal zone, it would be 12 months after board adoption or upon Coastal Commission certification, whichever is later, that we would allow operators to apply for hardship extensions to this implementation period. And we have some options that we're going to talk about in later slides. And then identify the decision maker and appeal process for the hardship extensions. And we also have some options for you to consider. And then, of course, that we would consider changes to existing odor abatement plans as a minor change to the existing land use entitlement and that that would be processed ministerially rather than going through a new permit process. The big ticket item for today, as Director Plowman had described, we really think that where the rubber hits the road here with these ordinance amendments is the requirement for multi-technology carbon filtration. This was a very clear directive from the board during their January 14th hearing where they want to require all operators to utilize carbon filtration, which could include carbon filter units, photocatalytic oxidation and/or other odor control systems that provide equivalent or greater odor control effectiveness. And there were some comments during that board hearing by at least one or two of the board members where they acknowledged that this odor control technology continues to evolve and as we move forward, new technology may become available that provides equal or greater control than the technology that we have now. So we tried to build that in. And I have a definition for you that we'll, we'll take a look at in just a second. So staff proposes the following definition for multi-technology carbon filtration. We think that this captures the spirit of what the board was talking about during their January 14th hearing. And that definition reads as follows. "Air filtration technology that utilizes activated carbon, which may include carbon filters, photocatalytic oxidation or PCO units, and other equivalent technologies that utilize carbon filtration." And we can come back to this slide during your deliberations if you want to roll up the sleeves and get into this. Just a reminder that with the adoption of the carbon requirement, we're going to move away from vapor phase and misting systems. So one of the directives in the ordinance package is that vapor phase misting systems would be phased out over the 12-month implementation period and no longer allowed to be used in odor abatement plans. During your January 29th hearing, the commission directed staff to include odor abatement requirements in the inland area. And so we have drafted up ordinance language that's in your memo packet that would require cannabis growers with indoor growing and/or processing operations in the inland area to prepare and implement OAPs utilizing these same requirements that are proposed for the coastal zone. And because the full ordinance package that we're doing for the coastal zone doesn't apply to the inland area, we also recommend that in the inland area, we require operators to implement runtime meters on their equipment. And this will help staff ensure that the equipment is being operated as it's approved. Okay, little transition slide here. So now we're going to get into the slides for discussion purposes. These were items that were not completely resolved at the last commission hearing. And just a reminder, first off, why we're here. We're here because the existing threshold, as written in the ordinance, isn't working for us. And that odor threshold is really reliant upon odor that's experienced in residential areas. And as everyone knows, staff is having a very hard time using this language to perform our compliance function, and it hasn't been successful. So we have come up with a new approach, and that approach would establish a threshold to be used at the property line of an operator. And we, in developing the threshold and thinking about how we're going to enforce this, we did explore several options for different technologies. And we explored the nasal ranger, which we've discussed and many of you have actually now seen. We did explore options such as gas chromatograph or mass spectrometry. We don't think that these technologies are practical or economical for county staff to implement in the field and certainly not for county staff to detect odor, nuisance odors at property lines. And then, of course, we did explore other technologies. I'm not going to list them all, but just as an example, we did have the Cannabusters folks come and give public testimony several times. Their product is an odor neutralizer product to be used in conjunction with carbon filters. And of course, that is a vapor phase type project that's being disallowed by the ordinance package. So we just wanted to highlight for you guys that we did explore options and we landed on the nasal ranger for the reasons that I'll talk about in just a second. So why the nasal ranger? Well, it's a low-cost solution and it allows staff to collect quantitative odor measurements in certain locations. It's appropriate for detecting odor measurements at property lines. So we can take the device into the field and we can stand in a particular location and get a reliable reading. It allows us to easily and quickly collect measurements in the field. And as you have been shown in person, staff go through a sensitivity test where they're screened to ensure that they are an appropriate user to use the technology. And our staff that are in the compliance group have been trained on how to use the nasal ranger. And certainly with the 12-month implementation period, we're going to continue to become more efficient and more knowledgeable in using the device prior to the ordinance language and requirements going live. Okay, so there has been some healthy discussion about the actual threshold. And so in the staff memo that your commission received, we included two different options. And option number one is nuisance odor from commercial cannabis activities shall not exceed seven D over T for a duration of consecutive three-minute period as measured at the property line. And so what this really means in plain language is that the operation may operate at a seven D over T but may not exceed it for a three-minute period. And then the second option, option number two is nuisance odor from commercial cannabis activities shall be below seven D over T for the duration of a consecutive three-minute period as measured at the property line. And what this means in plain language is that a threshold rating of seven D over T for a duration of three minutes is in fact considered a violation and that the operator would be required to operate at a four D over T or lower in order to remain compliant. Now, based upon the board's feedback, the commission's feedback, and everything that we've learned by going through this process, staff's recommendation is for option number two. Option number two would require operators to operate below a seven D over T. Seven D over T would be considered a nuisance. And anything measured lower than the seven D over T with a nasal ranger would be considered faint or very faint. Faint measurement values of four or less are very difficult to pick up with the instrument because they are so dilute. And measurement odors at these values are considered transient. Detection at, and then we want to reiterate that detection of seven D over T at the property line would be an exceedance. So if staff goes out into the field, we take our measurements for three minutes with the nasal ranger, the operator, we get detections of seven D over T, that would be a violation. Facilities must operate at four D over T or less in order to be compliant. Okay, moving on to the hardship extensions. At the last hearing on January 29th, your commission asked us to come back with some options. The bullet points on this slide are just a few of the reasons why folks may be requesting a hardship extension. It could be for supply chain delays, onsite power supply upgrades that are necessary to install the new odor abatement equipment, off-site power supply upgrades and availability, and then other hardship circumstances as determined by the director. We, we acknowledge that we can't anticipate every reason why folks are going to request a hardship extension. So the options for a decision maker for these requests, we have three options that we'd like you to consider. Number one, the director may grant an initial extension up to 12 months with additional requests approved by the board prior to the expiration of that 12-month period. The second option would be that the planning commission is the decision maker for the initial extension up to 12 months. And then again, additional requests would be approved by the board prior to expiration. And the third option would be simply that the board approves all extension requests prior to the expiration. Options for appeals. The decision maker for hardship determinations could be the director, the planning commissioner, the board. An action on a determination could be appealable or it could be considered final and not subject to appeal. These are both viable options. Next steps after today's hearing would be to present your final recommendations to the board on March 18th. Staff would develop comprehensive language, including everything that is recommended by your commission today, and we would package that up and present it to the board. And then upon board action, we would then submit the board adopted coastal zone amendments to the California Coastal Commission for Certification. The inland piece would become effective upon the board's action. And then staff's recommendations are identified here. I will spare you reading them, and we can get into that when you guys are ready to make a motion. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and we would love to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Mr. Cooney, did you have some questions?
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you. And listening to Mr. Briggs go through the pending issues in such smooth fashion reminded me of the very appropriate lesson he gave in operating the nasal ranger a couple of weeks ago. And I just want to start by saying I have a lot of confidence in our staff. I don't think that is the weak spot, but I do think that the planning commission can raise issues that, that could be the subject of further consideration. And, and one that's bothered me is a 12-month extension, which could be extended further. And, and there may be good reasons for it, but the problem with it is that we've, we're producing what we think is a formula for success in measuring violations and eliminating odor, but we're saying, stand by. We, we aren't putting that into effect yet. So I'm wondering if the basis for that, Mr. Briggs, maybe Ms. Kim, is a legal concern that it would be illegal to change the rules of the game and expect everybody to comply on day one? Or is there some practical reason I'm missing?
Commissioner Cooney through the chair. I heard two things, and so I want to try and separate them. One is the effective date of the ordinance. And then there's another factor, which is in the event that they didn't have the power to start those scrubber units, that they could seek a hardship exemption, extension. So I heard two, two things, and I just want to make sure you understand which one you're asking about.
So my impression is maybe being corrected right now, but I assume that all the growers would have the opportunity to delay implementation of scrubbers, for example, for a period of 12 months.
So that is the, that's the effective date of the ordinance. And that is to give the, the applicants time to, well, one, we're waiting for the Coastal Commission, too, but it's also to give the applicants time. And so I think you're, you're right about your assumption that we want to make sure they have sufficient time and that there's a change of the rules midstream to an approved permit so that they can get those things installed without tremendous hardship. So I think your, your assessment of the situation is correct, but I, am I making myself clear? Maybe not. Kim, do you want to say anything?
Through the chair, Commissioner Cooney. That's a good question, and I think what staff has laid out is, there's actually two 12-month periods. The first one, so the ordinance will go into effect either upon Coastal Commission certification or, and then it will become operative within 12 months so that all operators have to install this technology within 12 months. If some of them are unable to do so for matters outside of their control, access to electricity, et cetera, supply chain, then they will have the opportunity to apply for an additional 12-month extension.
Can you repeat that? Can you just repeat that?
Sure. So I think what staff has presented is an ordinance that will be operative for all operators within 12 months, giving within 12 months, giving them 12 months in order to, you know, recoup their investments on their existing properties and install, go through whatever measures they need to install this technology. And then for those who are unable to do so, presumably because of matters outside of their control, which staff has listed, then they would have the opportunity to apply for an additional 12-month period to allow them to get up to speed.
Just to respond to that, now, I was assuming that and was thinking if I am bothered by the odors in my home, someplace in the Carpinteria area, and was told that there is an improved ordinance coming forth, and it's publicized, okay, we're going to attack the odor problem in a different way. I'm not going to be happy that it could be up to two years if someone's got legitimate need for more time. And who's deciding whether there's a legitimate reason or not? Maybe the board, which would extend the time even further. Somebody gets on the board agenda and it's busy, it might be half a year before they actually get heard. So I at least want the commission's decision on this issue to be qualified upfront, that these extensions are potential. They're not certain, but they're potential. The 12-month extension, we're pre-indicating that there, we assume that everybody needs time to catch up with the board's action and our support as to the limitation of the ordinance. But right upfront, I don't want anybody to think, you know, there's going to be a big difference if they are having an ongoing odor problem in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes, through the chair, just to reiterate, this body has considerable discretion in terms of how those hardship extensions are handled and the operative date, and that that information will be taken to the board for their final decision.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just want to let the commission know that we have Natalie Nez from Southern California Edison is online via Zoom, as well as our consultants. They're available to answer any, they're available to answer questions.
Great.
Not any questions, but be able to answer questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez, did you have some questions?
Yes, thank you, and good morning to everyone. In regards to slide number four, there's indication that requires OAPs be certified by a California licensed professional engineer and no longer by a certified industrial hygienist. What's the difference?
So I'm not going to be the best person to describe this, and maybe our folks from Geosintec could jump in here, but essentially it's about qualifications. An industrial hygienist doesn't look at this type of information. They're not the appropriate certified professional to look at an odor abatement plan and certify that it's going to be effective. And we should be relying on an engineer, not an industrial hygienist.
Okay, so my take from that is basically an engineer is basically certifying the mechanism which is measuring the nasal situation.
No, so the engineer would certify that the odor abatement equipment, so the carbon scrubbers, the PCO units, that the number and the location of those units are going to be effective in treating the odor from the operation. So they're going to be running the calculations of air volume and how many times it turns over per hour, and they're going to put their stamp on a report saying this approach, this technology, is going to be effective in combating the odor generated by this operation.
Okay, so there's formulas out there that the engineers, that are accepted formulas within the industry that the engineers can use in this application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then my next question was in regards to slide number five, where it says establish an implementation period of 12 months or upon coastal commission certification, whichever is longer. So I'm reading this in two different ways, and maybe I'm reading this like a lawyer, is my understanding is coastal commission certification is required in some places within our county. Is that correct?
Yes. Commissioner Martinez, the coastal commission is required to certify any ordinance amendments that are applied to the coastal zoning ordinance.
Okay, with that, so then if, in this ordinance, when it becomes effective, those who are not affected by the coastal commission will have 12 months to implement this program, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then those who are affected by the coastal commission will have 12 months after the coastal commission certifies this ordinance, or not?
No, just to clarify, so it would be, it would be an or situation, not an and situation. So they would have 12 months or upon the coastal commission's action to certify the amendments, whichever is longer.
Okay.
So if the commission takes 15 months, folks are going to get that 15 months. If the commission takes nine months, folks are going to get 12 months.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask the question this way then. So if I'm an operator and I know I need, I'm waiting for the coastal commission certification, coastal mission certification comes up on February 28th, let's say of this year of my example, coastal commission certification, they have their meeting and they say, we certify it. So from that day, I better be in compliance. Is that what we're saying? Or do they have a period of time after the certification to know what they're supposed to be complying with?
So they have at least 12 months after the board takes action, correct? That's the minimum time period that they're subject to. If the commission happens to take longer than 12 months, they get that extra time.
Okay.
But if the commission acts before 12 months, folks get at least 12 months.
Okay, so my scenario, I'll back up then. We have 12 months, coastal commission takes 15 months to do it. So the operator knows 12 months, okay, that's already passed, I better be ready to go.
Yes.
Coastal commission comes in on three months thereafter to that date, 90 days, says we certify it. At that date of certification, that operator should be in compliance with what we've passed here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, okay. My next one was in regards to slide number seven. This is the multi-technology carbon filtration. Our efforts here are just to simply, to define what multi-technology carbon filtration is. That's it, correct? That's, we're only going, in other words, within this ordinance, there's no other filtration method that is recognized to address the odor situation?
Correct. The odor abatement plans would need to incorporate multi-technology carbon filtration as defined in the ordinance.
So carbon always has to be part of the filtration situation here?
That's correct.
Okay. Because then I'm looking at other equivalent technologies that you, well, again, there's the word carbon. What I'm getting at is are we boxing ourselves into only carbon filtration? Because my concern is what if other filtration methods become available in our future? Are we boxed in?
A little bit. I mean.
But that's the last phrase of this sentence, is or other equivalent technology.
Of carbon filtration?
Of carbon filtration. Yeah, no, you're right. If we could put the definition up on the screen, it might help us get to the point here. Commissioner Martinez, to answer your question, are we boxing ourselves in a little bit? Because we're basically saying you have to have some type of carbon. But we're also trying to acknowledge that the technology is evolving over time, and we do know that it could get better. And we're trying to create, by using the term other equivalent technologies, we're trying to create some space for ourselves to allow new technologies to come into our consideration.
And that's why I was questioning, I get and I like the sense of, and other equivalent technologies. I was thinking there was going to be a period right there instead of tying it to that utilized carbon filtration. That's what my concern was, because I get what we're saying is something can come up in the future that's even better.
Commissioner Martinez, through the chair, yeah. Sorry.
I've been there before.
So this is the definition of multi-technology carbon filtration. But in the provisions of the code, we say this is what you're supposed to use, and unless there's another technology that's available that's equivalent. That is what the board directed, is that you would use this technology, and then if some other technology were developed that were equally or better at reducing the odor, you would be able to use that technology.
And we're talking about wording outside of the definition of
Correct.
Carbon filtration.
Correct.
So there's language in the ordinance, I must have missed it because I thought we were just sticking to only carbon filtration, but if there's language that's in the ordinance that says carbon filtration, and then it defines it, and then it says or other technologies like or better.
Right.
Then that works for me. That gives us outside the box.
The board was pretty clear that they wanted to allow enough flexibility that if some new technology was developed that was, you know, head and shoulders above all others, that they would be able to implement that.
Okay, thank you. That answers my concern. Thank you.
Okay, just, I know we have other questions. So I think if Commissioner Martinez looks at, I think there's an attachment C1, page four, E2, and it says other odor control systems that provide equivalent or greater odor control effectiveness than multi-technology carbon filtration. That's the cause you're talking about, right? So, okay, thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Okay, I'll just, well, I'll just bridge on what they just talked about. I would like to make sure that the ordinance doesn't preclude operators and others from adapting more effective technology as it might emerge. But obviously, the multi-tech carbon filtration is the best technology that's available today. So again, don't box ourselves in. Going back, I'd like to, a few thoughts around the extensions. I know extensions are going to be necessary. I do appreciate the fact, though, that we have hundreds, if not thousands, of people been asking for relief for years and have yet received none. So I don't want to be too casual about the timeline that's going to be available to achieve that. I mean, date the ordinance is enacted, 12 months implementation period, okay? Into that 12, and is everybody going to get right on that at the beginning? Or some going to wait, see what happens with the coastal commission, other things, perhaps fritter away some time? During all of that time, the people that have registered complaints and smell complaints are still suffering into that time period. Now, time to ask for an extension. An initial hardship extension, to me, due to some causes which are obvious and easily demonstrated and confirmed, like the supply chain delays, power supply delays, those sort of things, I think it's fine if those are approvable by the director since they're easily confirmed. I'm not comfortable with 12 months for that. I would suggest 90 days or, because again, these people are still suffering, waiting for relief, nothing's happening. Are they, okay, at the end of that, if they need an extension, I don't think it appropriate, it comes to us. Because as we all know, an issue comes to us, we act on it, there's the inevitable appeal, and during which time people continue to suffer. So I think any request for an extension of the initial one ought to go directly to the board's supervisors.
So Commissioner Reed, we're in questions. I understand what you're saying. I'm hoping that we can hear it again during deliberations because we probably all, yeah.
I mean, that would be what I would recommend, some modification of that. Finally, you know, with nasal ranger, we make reference to other alternatives, gas chromatography, et cetera. I've used gas chromatography in a lab setting, atomic spectrum in a lab setting, all of those. They're great for identifying what a compound is, for quantifying may not be so good. So as far as nasal ranger, it's the best we have now. I thought my little in-service was a tremendous eye-opener. We can revisit, as I'd had reservations before. And among the options you have, I think it provides great insight as to what option is actually the best or better of the ones. So those are, those are my initial round of questions and comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Park?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and they, these are the subjects they cover. First will be about the 12-month extension that Commissioner Cooney raised first. Second will be about the definition of multi-technology carbon filtration, et cetera, that Commissioner Martinez raised. And then the third is going to be about an issue I've raised in the past repeatedly about the gap between timing of a complaint and the measuring with nasal ranger. And I'm personally satisfied we've reached a solution on that, but I think it's important we go over it because I raised it. Let me start with the 12-month extension. Something that I don't understand is if we're past the initial 12 months, that we're the time of granting an extension or not, is it 12 months and that's it? Or is there discretion to make it nine months, six months, three months, 30 days?
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Park, the language as it's written now says up to 12 months. So the decision maker would have the discretion to grant a shorter time period.
Okay, I think that's very important, and thank you for clarifying that.
And just a reminder, so as the commission is considering this extension process, let's remember that in that 12-month period, it's really two different things for the operator. Number one, they have to redesign their odor abatement plan. So right now, if they're using a misting system, they're going to have to go through the engineering side in order to develop a revised plan that gets rid of the misting system and incorporates carbon filtration. And then the second piece is actually installing the units, right? You got to buy the units, you got to install them, they got to become operational. So the extension period, the extension request, is not going to be for the development of a new OAP. You better get your engineer on board and revise your OAP within that 12-month period. We're really only talking about extensions to the 12-month period because somebody can't physically buy the carbon units, or there's not enough power that comes to their site. So just remember that there's two different things that the operator is going to be responsible for in that 12-month period, and if they ask for an extension, it's only for the implementation of the new plan, not for the creation of it.
But it'll be 12 months or less.
Or less.
Yeah, I can't overemphasize how important that is. If someone comes up in front of the decision maker seeking an extension, and you can only go 12 whole months, okay, you might be much more likely, as a decision maker, say, you know, I just can't go that far, I'm just going to say no. I mean, it's like England in the early 1800s where every crime was punishable by being hung, so no one ever got convicted of anything. And it's the same kind of thing. Okay, let's move on. Could you go to, well, you're on slide seven. The multi-technology carbon filtration, I kind of have two questions there. One, this is very helpful because it appears to make the items that could be included, carbon filters, PCO, et cetera, as an either/or thing. So if you have simple carbon filtration alone, that qualifies under this, okay? I had the misapprehension, actually, in all prior hearings where this term was used, that it meant you had to use all these things. You had to have a multiple technology in one system, and simple carbon filtration would not qualify. But apparently, that's not the issue. So I appreciate that, right? I've got it right now that it's either/or. Now, this is back to Commissioner Martinez's question about the and/or other equivalent technologies that utilize carbon filtration. And what I understood from your answer is that that's in this definition of multi-technology carbon filtration. The ordinance is a little broader, and it refers to the potential for other equivalent technologies that perhaps don't utilize carbon filtration. A concern I have is we see someone sneak back in vapor phase version 2.0, okay? Yeah, this one's different. It's really different. The molecules are of a different size, and et cetera, et cetera. I don't want to see that happen. I want to make sure the language is clear that that won't happen. It appears to me in your slides, you've got things that say vapor phase is out, you've got that that said vapor phase is out. Okay, so are you confident we won't see vapor phase 2.0 sneak back in?
We are.
Good.
I mean, it's expressly written right there in the ordinance.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Park, if you, on the screen, item number two, this is the ordinance, this is what Mr. Briggs is referring to as far as, to answer the questions about in the future if other technology becomes available.
questions about in the future, if other technology becomes available. And, yeah, the removal of vapor phase.
Yeah, I think it's good. Okay, let me go to my last ones. I spoke at length at the last hearing about my concern over the gap in time, potential gap in time, likely gap in time, between the time odors detected and somebody lodges a complaint, and the time staff can get out there. And we heard from the GeoSynTech expert and others that, you know, if it's eight hours later, it's kind of a meaningless relationship. I did find it very useful, to reiterate what Commissioner Cooney said, to go into the office here and play with the nasal ranger. When I was there, I was with Commissioner Cooney and Mr. Kaufman of GeoSynTech, and Director Plowman, and you, Mr. Briggs, and perhaps somebody else. We had a little discussion there. And it became clear to me that staff can't really respond to a five-in-the-morning complaint that day, except later, when staff comes in. But staff can go out the next morning at the same hour and test it. And if it's Thursday and it smells at five in the morning, it's probably going to smell on Friday at five in the morning. And also, staff expects that the number of complaints that will be lodged are likely to be much fewer now that you go to universal carbon scrubbers, which allows you to kind of focus on problem areas. I think that that's not a myth, that some areas are problems and some are not. The first carbon scrubber installation that I personally attended and that we approved was David Van Wingerton's system, which is simple carbon filtration. And there was a new residential development happening right at the time. And I keep hearing that there's never been a complaint. And that tells me that, okay, there are hotspots in places where it works. And so if in the future, and we have carbon filtration everywhere, and you have staff that's ready to go out, maybe not immediately at five in the morning, but they can get there the next day at five in the morning, and they can have a focused investigation in a certain area, maybe go back three or four times, that that ought to do the job. Do you think that's answered the concern I have? I mean, I know you can't read my mind, you probably don't want to, but at least the way that I've recited it to you in the past.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Park, to reiterate what you said about carbon filtration implementation and things getting better, we absolutely do believe that. The implementation of the ordinance is going to improve OAPs across the board in the carpentry area. And because of that, we do believe that we're going to have less complaints. Now, not all OAPs are created equal. We believe that the runtime meters are going to really help us verify who is maintaining their equipment and running their equipment as required. We believe that that's a very important tool in helping us get to where we need to be. And then certainly, as we've discussed in our meetings, compliance staff is energetic about this effort. And with a 12-month implementation period, it gives us a lot of time to prepare ourselves. So we are going to be thoughtfully approaching how we do this. And if we get a complaint, let's just say it's 10:00 AM, we're going to try and be out there at 10:30. You know, we're going to be at these sites as quickly as we possibly can, within reason. And there are going to be circumstances, if someone complains at 1:00 in the morning, I mean, clearly, we're not going to respond at 1:30. But we're going to do our best to be there first thing in the morning and do what we can to take measurements as close to the particular complaint as possible. So we're addressing people's concerns.
They've got my private cell phone number, but we'll give them Commissioner Cooney's, and he can be there in minutes. He's smiling. Good.
He has been tested on the device, so.
I know. He's good at it. I was worthless, so.
Okay. I have a series of questions, too. And they're kind of all over the place. One simple one was in the staff report on page, where you talk about the recommendations toward the end of it. Hang on. I think I missed, that we're adopting ordinance 12 and 11, correct? 12 is coastal and 11 is inland?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so the statement in the staff report that, on page four, item two, under recommendations and procedures, I think, is number 11 missing there? No, no, 11 and 12. I'm sorry. I'm wrong.
So, yeah, so there's separate resolutions, one for each code?
So in the paragraph above that, recommendations and procedures, what is 25 Ord 001? Is that just a typo? The paragraph above, staff recommends, third line, middle of the paragraph, case number 25 Ord 1?
You caught a mistake.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something. That was the easiest thing. The, I understand that we're going to require changes to OAPs. And if I'm understanding all of the discussions so far, those OAPs have to be submitted back to staff within a year of the effective date of the ordinance, right? Submitted to and approved within a year?
Yes. And we would hope that they happen well before the one-year period, because the operator would still need to implement the OAP within that time period.
It has to be implemented by 12 months?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So if they come to you at 10 months before the 12-month timeline, then what happens? I mean, you may not be able to turn it around. Is there any, would it help if we said must be submitted within six months of the effective date of ordinance, so that 12 months is effective, the OAP implementation? I mean, I'm trying to really figure out how this actually works.
Yeah. Madam Chair, can you repeat that question?
Well, if it's 12 months for it to be implemented, the OAP, and there's no preliminary goal for the applicant to submit it within six months of the passage of the ordinance or the effective date of the ordinance, then they can wait until 11 and a half months, submit it, and then say, oh, well, we didn't get back from staff in two weeks, which is an unreasonable timeframe, and therefore be out of compliance and miss that 12-month deadline, right? In other words, is there any value in putting in a preliminary must be submitted to staff within six months of the effective date of the ordinance, such that implementation will occur no later than 12 months from the effective date of the ordinance?
I, yeah, yes. The Commission could do that. I don't know if they need six months, but that we need six months to review it and whatnot. But, yeah, we could certainly ask for them to have an OAP prepared and ready to go, so that at the 12-month mark, they can go, move forward.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I understand your question.
I'm asking that question, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's the, I think the intent is that at that 12-month date, they need to have that equipment operational.
Right.
They do. And so it behooves them to come in early, and certainly, the Commission could include language with respect to that, so that they are ready to go, and that they're not in violation, and that they don't get NOV, and then potentially, a notice of determination with a fine.
Got it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to save that for deliberations. Okay, the runtime meters, the intent of the ordinance language, I saw it in the staff report, but maybe I didn't pick it up in the actual ordinance text, is it's going to be required in both the inland and the coastal zone section, right? Okay.
That's correct.
That's a huge advancement for the neighborhoods. The, explain to me, we have a number of OAPs out here. I tried to go in my hard copy files and find a couple that we've approved in the last four years. And the OAPs have been often written so that there's a tiered response, meaning a tiered response that if something isn't achieving a threshold, then they have to do something more and something more. I'm hearing from the fourth floor in particular, that the tiered response method is no longer trustworthy. And so I'm wondering how these OAPs are going to sit after everybody takes their OAP that was approved. They come in and now they put in carbon filtration, you know, maybe some other great things like neighbor notification, which we haven't even talked about yet, and other things. How does it work with the tiered system that was set up in those approved OAPs? I mean, are they rewriting the whole OAP, or is it an amendment to an OAP? Or how do you envision that happening?
Let me turn my mic on. Madam Chair, so the way I look at this tiered response is that it, we get a complaint, we go out and we investigate. This is just like any notice of violation, right, across the county? And then we work with the landowner to resolve that complaint. And so I believe in the tiered response, and I think staff could probably speak to this more directly, but it ratchets up what they have to do to come into compliance.
Yes.
Yeah.
It essentially just establishes a formal procedure for the operator to come into compliance. You do step number one first. If that doesn't work, we move to step number two. If that doesn't work, we move to step number three. If step three doesn't work, we utilize the enforcement tools that we have.
Madam Chair, if I could just add to you real quick, there's a difference between the existing built-in tiered response and then what staff is proposing with this amendment. So the existing tiered response was reliant upon odors being experienced in residential zone. And as we've been indicating, that was difficult to achieve. So we couldn't get into the tiered response in the existing ordinance, because there was just, there was no gateway for that to occur, because we couldn't verify or measure that to occur. So then with the ordinance amendments that we're proposing now, it's fine-tuning that tiered response, because now there's a catalyst for us to be able to now zone in on the violators or the potential problem areas. So now, the baseline is everybody has to use a multi-technology carbon filtration system. So that's baseline. So then, and now, if there's a complaint, we can go to the property line and measure that. And if it measures at whatever that threshold is determined, now we can start pinpointing where those issues are. And then we can start a tiered response, because now we can identify that emission source better than what the existing ordinance has done. So that's what we're proposing, is fine-tuning that tiered system, because now we have a way to actually get in, to find that emission source.
Okay. Because I think that the public, and like I said, I'm hearing a lot of this from the fourth floor, the trust of the tiered response is non-existent anymore. So people are expecting something hard and clear and non-negotiable. You know, carbon filtration is now going to be non-negotiable. The measurement at the property line, I'm okay with that. Nasal ranger is our best tool. I got that. If a nasal ranger goes out there and they find something at eight or seven, then tell us, what is the tiered response to that? They put in more charcoal scrubbers? They reduce their grow? They help us?
Madam Chair, like with any code violation, right? So this isn't really, I mean, this is unique in the sense that we have specified steps that are taken. But with any code violation, we give them an opportunity to correct the violation, right? And so this just lays out exactly how they would be going about doing that. But if we had a violation, we would go in and say, we need to look at your system, right? We need to understand that your system is either, we want to see your runtime. We might have GeoSynTech come out and analyze whether their system is working correctly. Those are the kinds of steps that would be taken. And then they can have options on how to correct it, whether or not they change their filters, or whether or not they add another unit because their system isn't working, even though all their units are functioning properly, there's still odor. They might have to amend their OAP to add another unit. So I think it just, I mean, and Mr. Briggs, if you want to talk more specifically about that, you can. But I think the problem is, is that, as Mr. Wilson said, we've never implemented the tiered system, because there was never a verified complaint. So I understand why there's a lack of trust in it, because we couldn't get to it. We couldn't get to it. So I think it is a useful tool. It will be a useful tool, because now we have, as Mr. Wilson said, access into the tiered response, because we will be able to demonstrate that there is odor at the property line.
Because there's numerical standards and thresholds that we can measure. Okay.
Right.
Yeah. And then, just as a closer, the underlying premise here is that these odor abatement plans have been developed by a certified engineer. They've been peer-reviewed by GeoSynTech and staff, and they should work. And if they're not working, that means something is wrong. And so the tiered response gives us an opportunity to figure out what's wrong.
Okay. So I'm very familiar with the notice of violation process, and the goal is to get an applicant to be compliant with all permitting required. So, and they are extended usually on a very reasonable basis, but not an unending timeline. You know, if you can't meet your ADU legal construction, you have to do it within three months, and that's sometimes extended, et cetera. So in this OAP thing, if there's a violation detected and, you know, you talk to the grower about a next step in the tiers, how reasonable is it for us to say, all options in the tiers have to be tried and verified within a certain number of months? Or could it go beyond a year-long period? You follow where I'm going? Because I know NOVs that have been around for three or four years, and they're still trying to get complied.
Yeah. I think, Madam Chair, we're, as compliance staff, we're not interested in letting violations go on for months and months and months, particularly when they're impacting the community. So I think what I want to do is just take a closer look at that while you are still having a conversation in deliberations, and circle back with you about providing a response to that, and maybe even a recommendation on what, how we could guarantee rapid response.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Hang on, let me just make sure. Did you have something to add on to that topic? Your lights on. Because I'm not done with my questions, so.
I do on that topic, but I can do it later.
Okay, can I just finish the questions? All right. The use of this multi-technology phase, whatever, how, all the OAPs and all the ordinance, please laugh with me, we relied on best available control technology, which is now nestled in that sub-paragraph E, best available control technology. So how is it that we had to go to this multi-technology thing, when best available control technology really was intended to cover that? What was backed such a flop? Why did it get pushed out in this language?
So, again, I'm going to do my best here, but if I don't do a good job, I'm going to ask GeoSynTech to jump in and help me. So best available control technology is an industry term, and it's used in certain industries to describe, like, you know, APCD uses that term a lot in treating air quality. And what we've learned is that that term is very specific to its use. And using it for cannabis nuisance odor is not an appropriate context for using that term. So we've tried to back away from using BACT and use, you know, carbon filters, use multi-technology carbon filtration. So we're trying to get away from BACT, because we don't believe that it's an appropriate term for the purposes that we're using it for.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that, believe it or not, covers my questions. So Commissioner Reed, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I have one more small question. When we were looking odor thresholds, you say in the presentation, we want to discuss option one, option two. But now, if I look back at the proposed ordinance amendment, that's attachment C, page two, it's item, section two, cannabis odor threshold. You see that sentence? It says, "Measurements of cannabis odor from commercial cannabis shall not equal seven for duration of a consecutive three-minute period."
Correct.
You think that's the best way to word that? I would suggest something. I should, if that's I should, if that's a standard, it should say, "Should not equal or exceed seven." Because 15 doesn't equal seven, and under this sentence, it would be okay. So just to remove the ambiguity, I would suggest that. And then adopt whatever standard we want.
Okay. And we'll have a chance to get to a lot of that stuff in deliberations, too. So was there another question?
I have one. I have a couple.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Martinez.
Okay. I'm going back to the hardship extension. And just for clarification, that's in Section 1, F2. And I'm coming at this from a perspective, I'm building upon what Chair Barley says, "Let's see how this thing works." And when I'm reading it for hardship extensions, it says, "The director may grant one initial extension to the 12-month implementation time period for up to 12 months." Understand that. But kind of building in the sense of when you're supposed to be submitting the OAP is, when do they have to submit the hardship? If I'm a crafty lawyer, I'm going to go, and you're going to come, and you're going to find me in violation of the 12-month, and I'm going to say, "I still have my hardship extension, which I can apply for." Although it sounds illogical, I think it should be their expiration. You either file it before the 12-month period of time, and you should probably file it in writing, in some form that's provided by the county. And building upon that, it says, "Any additional request for extension must be submitted 90 days prior to the expiration and approved by the Board of Supervisors." That makes sense. That's giving me a timeline, and I like that. But a request, does it have to be in writing? Because can I just do a simple call? These are kind of things that lawyers love to manipulate. I would think that there'd have to be some form that the county, they would have to submit the request for. And in regards to submitted 90 days prior to expiration, I get it, of the extension, so does that mean I can, are we going to, "Any additional request, extension must be submitted 90 days prior to the expiration and approved by the Board of Supervisors"? Does that have to be within the 90? I mean, the way I'm looking at it, I submit my request for an extension 90 days. Trying to get on the Board of County, on the County Board of Supervisors' agenda to be heard, it could be 120 days, is, you know, I don't know. I just don't know in regards to things.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Martinez, the intent of this is that the operator receives the extension approval prior to the expiration period. And we put that 90 days in there because we believe that gives us enough time to get to the decision-maker and have them make a decision prior to expiration.
Yeah. I just think we need to clarify that. And there's another little clarification, which some people do, and I've even had this. People argue, "Days" means what, business days or calendar days?
Calendar days.
I would just put that in there so there's no, "Well, there's a holiday or whatever. That gives me another day of extension." And then, the one that goes into hardship extension appeals, it says, "The director's action on a hardship extension may be appealed to the Board of Supervisors." I would think there'd be a timeline to appeal that. There's no indication of when you would have to appeal that, unless there's some administrative code that actually triggers that. But I would hate to see somebody, you're granted an extension, and you're given 11 months, and on the 10 months, somebody just wants to make hard times for you and appeals it or something. I'm just trying to look at how it works, if there's timelines in there. I think it'd be appreciated if they're in there. And how to submit the appeal request or the extension request. That's what I'm looking for in there.
Commissioner Martinez through the chair. So our code specifically outlines director determinations or decisions that can be appealed, and it has to be within 10 days of the action?
Okay. So there's an administrative code that accepts that, just kind of like CEQA and all that? Great. But in regards to the hardship extensions, that's, I would think that we need to just kind of tighten that up a little bit in regards to when they would have to submit it.
And we could reference that section of the code in the cannabis ordinance, so it's clear that that section applies.
Yeah. And that the request can't be verbal, it's going to have to be on some-
Oh, yeah, it has to be in writing and-
Some county form that's provided.
Pay a fee, and yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I just think if we clarify those things, that everybody knows how the rules of the field. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Park, and just for the public, thank you for hanging on. These are important questions, and we want to get them out on the table before we take your input. So Commissioner Park?
Yes. And that perfectly describes why I want to address tiered response. Tiered response isn't actually a term that's used in the code, is it?
It is in the code, yes.
It is. But a much more elaborate version of tiered response was adopted in the provisions of agreement between the so-called Coalition and carp growers, members of carp growers, isn't that correct?
Commissioner Park through the chair. That's correct.
Right. And so we've, from time to time, even on inland projects, adopted some tiered response provisions, but nothing as elaborate as appear in that agreement I just referred to.
I would say that's correct.
So, and Ms. Plamen, you said you were going to look into the questions on tiered response a little bit further. It would seem to be safe to say you're going to look into what's in the code and in our various permit language, but not into what's been operative in carpentry through the carp growers' coalition agreement.
That's correct. I actually am looking at the tiered response right now, that we are building into our code, it's new language, about exactly what the grower has to do in order to demonstrate that their equipment is working. And then if their equipment is working and we still have a problem, what the next step is, and that is a revised OAP. So I think it just lays out clearly what has to be done. It's not intended to create any delays in the correction. I think it just explains to the grower and to the public what's going to happen when they get a notice of violation, or that we have odor that's exceeding our threshold.
I just want to be sure if there are further questions by the public or commissioners about tiered response. It's very clear we're talking about the somewhat more limited thing that's operative in our code.
That's correct.
And not the more elaborate provisions that may in fact be superseded, for all I know. I don't know. But that's their problems, not ours in front of us. Thanks.
Commissioner Reed, did you have one more question? Okay. Thank you. Whew. All right. That was good. Ah, I do have one more. Did the staff consider anything? We get a lot of public comment about notices to neighbors on, you know, revised OAPs, just letting them know when the carbon filtration is going to be installed and what's going on on a grow site if they've been monitoring something for five or six years, and what is the status of that. Did staff consider any kind of noticing like we have for when an application's filed? Did you think about that?
It's a-
Chair.
Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. It's a unique circumstance.
Right. New law in the middle of it, changing it up. Yep.
And what we are doing in terms of allowing people to revise their OAPs is we're making those small R revisions, which are not appealable, right? This is to make sure that growers, encourages growers to fix their OAPs and not then end up in some long, you know, extended process on an appeal. So we don't, we're not issuing any permit. Maybe we could do, you know, I'm wondering if there's something we could have on our website that talks about when things are, when we have received revisions to OAPs. So I'd like to talk with my team a little bit about that.
Yeah.
But I think that's maybe the best way to do it.
Okay.
Is to have some kind of notification of the revised OAPs that we've received. And that gives people an opportunity, they can come in and review them and talk to us about them, so that they at least know what's happening with relation to that property.
Okay. That sounds like a great idea. If you can huddle on that a little more.
Okay.
Okay. It's 10:25. Do we want to take a quick break or go straight to public comment? Yeah, let's do a five-minute, yeah. Yes, yes. I'm hearing from staff. So a five-minute break, we'll be back at 10:30.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We are reconvening the San Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of February 19th. Thank you for that break, and we will commence public hearing, public testimony now. I only have three speaker slips. If anybody else wants to address the commission in the room, please get that speaker slip in as soon as possible, not longer than
We have eight online.
Ten minutes from now. So ten minutes is a cutoff for in-room, and let's start with the online testimony. I may be break at four speakers, then we'll go to our in-house.
Okay, and did you, three minutes each?
Three minutes each, yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So our first speaker will be Anna Correio, to be followed by Gabriel Lerma.
Good morning. Good morning. My name, excuse me, sorry, my name is Anna Correio. So been very interesting listening to all you've tried to do. Big question is where on the property line are you going to be measuring? Is it where the complaint is, you know, the closest to the road? I mean, I'm just, you know, kind of trying to think, you know, how it would occur, because it would be better to be able to measure it at the vent lines, but I, you know, understand that maybe the grass chromatography may not be working, may not be sufficient, or may not be available or feasible. You know, and then I think, you know, Carpinteria, you know, we need something definitely lower than seven D over T. I mean, you know, that's, you know, we need it to be no odor at the property line, which I, you know, but I'm not, but definitely something lower than, you know, seven. You know, and please, I appreciate Lisa, Director Plowman, bringing up about how to, you know, noticing. On the website may not be sufficient, but maybe something in the local newspaper, you know, we're reviewing these OAPs for, you know, these, you know, cannabis operators. The public has not heard about anything from the local grower for six, seven years since they applied for their application, which was before they were even growing. Maybe they were growing medical, you know, cannabis, but definitely not to the extent that they are now. So that's why I keep pushing that there be some sort of notification, because who is going to keep a form that came five, six years ago? Even seven years ago about the contact number, I'm sure some of those have changed, you know, just how to, you know, go ahead, you know, with that. We definitely, Carpinteria Watson deserves zero D over T. There was a good letter from the Carp, City of Carpinteria requesting, you know, the same, you know, the same thing. And then please do not allow the operators to apply for extensions. And if you are going to do it, I like the idea that one of the commissioners said about, you know, within six months, you know, you turn in your revised OAP, so that, you know, you're able to get it done in the, you know, in the twelve, you know, in the twelve months. I hope you consider my comments before approving the amendments presented to you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Correio.
Just a request from, from staff here, for those of us joining us online. So I'm not currently seeing any hands raised, although I'd assume that some of you want to speak. So yes, if you could raise your hand if you'd like to speak, that'd be great. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mark Cram. Mr. Cram, it looks like you just need to unmute yourself.
I'm afraid there may be a mix-up. This is Derek Stuckey. I logged in with Mr. Mark Crams or Dr. Crams' link. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, that's fine. Derek Stuckey, was your name?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Derek Stuckey is my name. And I want to say thank you to the Planning Commission staff and everybody involved in this gargantuan and long-going-on session about cannabis odor. The first thing that I would like to say, folks, is that the truth will set you free. Here's the problem with measuring cannabis odor with a nose, behind a nasal ranger or on an olfactometer. Are we achieving truth? Is that immutable truth, or is that simply the opinion of a nose? I would like to speak very strongly against the idea of using a nasal ranger or olfactometer to quantify cannabis odor. Empirical data is the only solid ground that anyone can stand on when it comes to cannabis odor. So I would like to ask and make my case that empirical data needs to be provided in cannabis odor quantification achieved by gas chromatography, which is indisputably empirical. So that's my first point. The second point I'd like to make is that these multi-stage carbon scrubbers, does anyone on the board or on the staff know what the percentage of odor reduction is produced by these units? We can answer that later. I would like to say, I heard the number eighty-four percent bandied about. If that's correct, so be it. My system's Cannabusters is reducing odor from cannabis facilities ninety-eight and a half percent as measured by gas chromatographic testing. So the question about BACT also came up. B A C T. What is B A C T? Well, does anybody truly know? If we're measuring it with nasal ranger, we will never know. However, BAC has, B A C T has yet to be established because other odor solutions have not been considered alongside the Infinity Multi-Stage Carbon Filtration Unit. I would like to request the board carve a space so that a shootout between opposing or other technologies can be looked at to establish what truly is B A C T. That's all that I have for the board and staff. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Next speaker online, is there anyone?
So we have several, okay, so our next speaker will be Michael Head. And again, just a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please raise your virtual hand.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, could you please state your name for the record?
Sure, my name is Michael Head. I'm with Buyer Scientific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, hello, commissioners, cultivators, and community members. As I just mentioned, my name is Michael Head. I am the COO and General Counsel of Buyer Scientific. I wanted to take this opportunity to briefly reintroduce our company. Most of you know us for our years-long effort to help the county and cultivators work together to address cannabis cultivation odor through the adoption of our vapor phase odor control technology. However, what many of you may not know is that our company was also the first to introduce molecular filtration, AKA carbon filtration, for cannabis cultivation odor control in the county. While molecular filtration has long been the preferred odor control approach for indoor cannabis cultivation, no one was bold enough to try it with greenhouse cultivation until our company worked with a local cultivator, David Van Wingerton, on a pilot project at CVW Organic over three years ago. CVW installed eighteen of our 6,000 CFM scrubbers in its cultivation spaces, and we are happy to report that this approach has been a resounding success. Independent third-party testing of these units has demonstrated their efficiency and efficacy in handling cannabis plant emissions. And more importantly, as Commissioner Park mentioned earlier, CVW has not received a single odor complaint since installing our scrubbers, even with sensitive receptors within 100 feet. This fact has been corroborated by county code enforcement. Based on the success, CVW is in the process of adding an additional twenty-seven of our newly-designed 2,000 CFM units. Our company has been recognized across the country, and in fact, many parts of the world, by both the market, because of our successful installations, and the scientific community as the foremost authority on cannabis odor. This is largely due to our scientists pioneering research that led to the identification of the chemical compound primarily responsible for cannabis's distinctive skunky odor. We have leveraged our years of research into cannabis plant emissions to refine our odor control strategies and products. For example, we have been able to optimize the energy efficiency of our units to allow their use in areas where power is in short supply, like your county. We also facilitate third-party testing of the specially-selected activated carbon media in our scrubbers and offer full service and maintenance plans to ensure optimal operation. We also offer cloud-based monitoring reporting so that critical system information is always just a click away. And to remove any barriers, we are able to offer equipment purchase financing, including zero percent interest rates for qualified purchasers. I say all this not to boast, but rather to point out that while our competing, while there are competing technologies, we can demonstrate a five-year cost of ownership lower than any other product on the market. Our company has been working with this community since day one to address this problem, and we are committed to solving it with hard science and adoption of proven technology so that cultivators and their neighbors can both appreciate and benefit from the economic opportunities cannabis presents for the county. Thank you for your time and for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Do we have any, one more online?
Madam Chair, no additional hands up.
Okay, let's go to our speakers in the room, and I'll read the first, to be followed by the second speaker that can get ready to approach the podium. And please state your name for the record before you begin testimony. Paul Roberts, I believe. Roberts. Yeah, to be followed by Jill Stacinos.
Good morning, I'm Paul Roberts. I live in the La Mirada area of Carpinteria. I've probably sent a hundred different complaints in with respect to cannabis odor various points in time. I promise not to report any complaints at 3:00 AM. I also know that it can vary from a Thursday to a Friday. And so what Commissioner Park said with respect to going on a, going on a Friday after a Thursday report might, might not work. And honestly, I, like, I've lived here, I've lived in, I love my community. I've lived there for thirty-five years. So I'm here making a mess, not because I want to, but because I feel compelled to do it on account of this, like, this nuisance that pervades our community. So just let me try to address some of the significant words that, that were expressed this morning, and some of them are in the staff report, but hardship. So when I hear that, that the growers could be extended a hardship extension, in my life, we've been extending them a hardship extension for seven years. So as little time as possible with as hard a stop as possible, and I, and I truly appreciate the comments from those of you on the, on the, on the, on the commission who have legal experience, because the growers have various sophisticated counsel, and they will push this to the max. That's why we're here. They knew about this tier reporting that wasn't going to work. They knew all about the, the grow, our, our collaborative committees that our family has served on that went absolutely nowhere for us, nothing. And I'm not, I'm not, as my grandmother would say, baking any blame cakes. It's just, here we are today, you, you're at a pivot point, and I just want it to be as certain and ethically honest for all of us as we can get. I, I brought with me, but I dropped it on the floor, some minutes from a, from a call, how much time? That I, because, because Glass House is a publicly traded company, you can see what they say to their investors, and they have to publish this online. And so I just want to, to give you an idea about what we're up against, because they said this, their CEO said this, "As we have built a proverbial aircraft carrier, we thrive in both stormy and calm waters. Our record low cost, thanks to our record low-cost production and consistent quality, we can do this in a way that few, if others, can't do." And their, their profits in the third quarter of 2024 were more than $30 million. So please, they know this was coming. They've known this for a long time. David Van Wingerton, they know him. Don't give them any more time. They don't need any more time. They've got the money. They know what we're going to do, and thanks to your good efforts, we're going to achieve a change in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Okay, our next speaker is Jill Stacinos, to be followed by, I'm sorry, Jared Ficker.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jill Stacinos, and I've been living in Santa Barbara County for more than 20 years. The cannabis ordinance has directly affected my life due to my home being located near several cannabis grow sites. I applaud you for reviewing and considering making substantive changes to the current cannabis ordinance. I appreciate requiring multi-technology carbon filtration in all current and future cannabis growers and processors to use those scrubbers in their greenhouses and processing buildings. As a concerned resident of Carpinteria, I would like to offer the following suggestions to amend the cannabis ordinance. First, require all cannabis growers and processors to sign an annual affidavit of commitment to effectively use and maintain their regenerative carbon filter scrubbers in order to receive renewal of their annual cannabis business license. Revoke the business licenses of all cannabis growers, processors who do not comply with and follow the newly amended cannabis ordinance. That's one of the biggest issues in my mind has been enforcement, and it's been lacking. Second, provide growers with a list of approved regenerative carbon filter scrubbers that have been scientifically tested and found to be effective in removing the noxious odors of cannabis. Require beta testing of carbon filter scrubbers that have not been tested. Third, require zero malodor detection measured at the roof fence of the cannabis greenhouses and processing structures. Use gas chromatography instead of nasal rangers to measure the terpenes produced by cannabis. Terpenes have been proven to be the most odor-causing of the malodors, the skunk-like smell that the residents have been smelling, and that's produced by cannabis, those terpenes. Gas chromatography test results are highly reliable and easily reproducible. Gas chromatography is also the preferred method for terpene testing, unlike the use of nasal rangers. Fourth, require unannounced at different times of the day and night quarterly inspections during the first year of a cannabis grower processor's business license and semi-annually thereafter. Fifth, require that residents, schools, and businesses within 1,000 feet be notified of the annual review of a cannabis grower processor's business license. Additionally, notify surrounding areas within 2,000 feet when a cannabis grower processor requests a permit change for their existing odor abatement plan. Putting the onus back on the community to have to check a certain website to get that information is not appropriate. Putting something in the newspaper, sending out something to the people, the residents who live nearby, that's much more appropriate, much more doable. Sixth, solicit community feedback prior to cannabis growers' process business licenses, review, and renewal. Also publicly verify when an annual cannabis business license has been renewed. Please do not allow cannabis growers, processors, any extensions for compliance beyond three months. Our community has been living with these malodors for more than six years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacinos. That brings us to Jared Ficker.
Hi, Chair Bradley and members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'll make my comments as quick as possible. First, I want to be very clear, carp growers, I'm here on behalf of carp growers, we support the change to carbon scrubbers. This is something we've been working on. In fact, carp- In fact, carp growers members have, this technology did not exist years ago, and it has been developed by our members. So we're developing technology not to not apply it. That's why we're here. We've developed this technology. A ton of work has gone into it, and I think we've learned a lot and have been, as your own odor consultants have for the county, made massive improvements over time. Now, we still want to do more, and we're committed to doing this. A couple of comments, I think I have about four or five I'll try and get through briefly, on the coastal zone standards. And we gave a detailed letter on file, which also included a red line of the ordinance amendments that you can refer to, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. So first and foremost, the 12-month implementation, I've done a lot of planning and policy work related to this. I've never seen a situation where, on the 12-month implementation, we're trying to implement part of it before it's actually been certified by the Coastal Commission. So I think we need to be very clear. We can't have a standard and a measurement period that we're essentially trying to implement before we've actually completed the policymaking process here. So I think that needs to be much clearer. The 12 months needs to be applied to actually when the policy is adopted. Second, when we're looking at application to facilities, I do want to make a point, there are a number of operators that operate nurseries. And I think the technology standards for nurseries that don't emit odor are very different, and we need to take note of that. On the definitions, I think we're relatively fine with that. I think there's some refinement that people will talk about, but generally, we're supportive of that. On the cannabis odor threshold, again, the standard is is we really want everyone to apply carbon scrubbers and get those implemented as quickly as possible. The threshold and at property line is a massive policy change. Our concern is that this threshold and at property line could be abused by the public in terms of filing complaints and other things. We're down, and we do believe exceeding 7D over T, 7D over T is, in the county's own documentation, a noticeable amount of odor, but it also, in moving to property line, allows for dilution. In the area, it rapidly dilutes. Many of our facilities aren't right on property line. But we recommend that in option one, and the staff's recommendation is appropriate. Next, in the nasal ranger documentation, one of the things that isn't being captured, but two field oloflect, the observations in a one-hour period separated by 15 minutes, I think that would be an improvement to getting a little bit better data than a singular measurement. Related to the extensions and other things, I will make note that we have several operators that have started to implement or have already implemented. But things on considering these times are not just things, getting a simple electrical permit often is taking up to or in excess of six months. So there are things that we go forth and implement. So we're talking about 12 months to actually have this operating and implemented in the field. And then just the permitting, pulling building permits for this, electrical permits, is taking a considerable amount of time. That's our experience to date. Next, on appeals for hardship, I think we're generally okay with that language. We think the first one should be a ministerial one. It could be limited in time with the planning director, and then something that could come back to the commission if we needed additional extensions. But again, the objective here is to install these as rapidly as possible. Finally, related to the threshold and public complaints, I do think we have a fairly obsolete system. The tiered response system was developed previously because we did not have technology to get all the way to carbon scrubbers. So the tiered response was to sort of upgrade to technology. And as Mr. Wilson said before, we're now changing the baseline. So I think the whole tiered response system is a little bit obsolete. I think the way the public engages in that is a little bit obsolete, and we've recommended some proposed changes and amendments. So finally, we support the efforts to move to carbon technology as fast as possible. It's a substantial policy change to change the odor threshold. I think this is the area that needs the most work. In your deliberations and discussions, I think you have your own experiences with understanding these differences in D of T. In some cases, they're barely perceptible. And I think we're talking about potentially giving tools to, you know, we've had many people in the public, it doesn't matter what we do. I think they're always going to be opposed to our projects. And we're concerned that that would be essentially an opportunity to retroactively undo our existing entitlements. And so we look forward to working with the staff and members of the public to implement this. But we have personal experience of the delays and issues with how we implement this. And I think if we roll up our sleeves and get carbon scrubbers installed at all these facilities, we look forward to that improvement for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ficker. That can, no, I'm sorry, we still have Michael Taylor in the room. Thank you. I didn't give you advance notice. Sorry about that.
I figured I was getting close. My name is Michael Taylor. I'm a greenhouse consultant. I've been an application engineer, mostly in supplemental lighting for greenhouses all throughout the world. I've worked with the greenhouses in Carpinteria ever since the first ones. And right now, I'm going to be discussing the slippery slope and the potential box that you guys are creating with at least the verbiage that I saw concerning carbon filtration versus PCO technology and multi-tech carbon filtration. Multi-tech carbon filtration, I think, is a very loose term that the real magic that's happening is involved with still the PCO reaction, with other, Infinity is a solution that I think has had the most robust test provided, whether or not the subjectivity is going to be a game changer, and whether or not the nasal ranger is going to be the exclusive tool to measure that. I think expediting a solution is the most important goal. And we have a local team at Omni Airflow that we can monitor, set up, and actively measure in real time solutions that we implemented. And we currently have the ability to run at 200 volts versus having to upgrade to 400 three-phase to run most of these other PCO still. Even though it has carbon in its name, it is still PCO technology. So our solution, which is exclusively PCO, is just as safe as anything that is PCO that has carbon built in. The maintenance is going to be less on our solution because there are no carbon filters. The efficacy of carbon versus PCO is very similar. The efficiency is higher with our product. Greenhouses are going to be looking at potentially $100,000 a month to provide for this carbon that's going to be required, if they're exclusively using carbon scrubbing. And back to the carbon and PCO, this is the technology that's been explored, and that really robust test that was performed, that should be emphasized that it was carbon, it wasn't carbon that was doing the job. It was the PCO. And that's what our product relies on. And because we can implement it quicker than anybody else, we can provide the solution at a large scale, and we can also provide financing. So I think we have-
I think you're at your time. But can I just, what is PCO?
That is a photocatalytic oxidation.
Okay. Thank you.
That's listed in your-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. I think that's all our speakers. Did you have a speaker slip in? Jared Ficker, Sarah Morton? Oh, sorry. My bad. Sarah Morton.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff, and community members. My name's Sarah Morton, and I am with Omni Airflow Systems. And we are currently listed, we're hidden down on C1, page 4, E2, as BACT, that is not there yet. So as you heard Michael speak a little bit earlier about what PCO is, we are a photocatalytic. It's what we offer. I feel like what we've heard from the staff is a lot of the carbon filtration, it's what's in everyone's minds, it's our focus. But everyone likes some good competition. And I think what we're here to offer and to make sure is in the documentation, is it's not an either-or situation. It doesn't have to have the carbon filtration attached to it, right? It's a lot of what we've seen, but we have test results. And our system, the way we implement that, includes a maintenance plan that's not based on complaints. It's not complaint and smell-driven. It's part of what we offer as a system so that we can feel good about the product we're producing. We know the efficacy of what we're putting out there, that it's cleaning the air on a regular basis. We know that we can get the D over T under four, that we have proven results on that from third-party. So we know that's totally attainable. I guess the other thing I really wanted to make sure was addressed, you guys spoke a lot of concern today about the timeline, right? People were wondering whether or not where that 12 months was going to hit. And I also believe I heard someone with staff say that they thought the turnaround time was going to be about six months. Is that right? Is that what we're, maybe?
No, we're asking for maybe a six-month, some middle deadline before a 12-month approval deadline.
Okay. So from what we know about growers and what their situation looks like, growers, for lack of better terminology, grow based on a sequential planting system. So typically, one greenhouse at a time is planted, you know, at a different time so that their harvest is consistent throughout the year, right? You don't want to plant all your greenhouses, have them all in the same stage at once, and then harvest them and have nothing for another four or five months, right? So for a company to come in and put a new system in for air filtration, odor abatement, that means that that has to be planned. The grower themselves needs to research all the different best available technologies. And we know, we've heard from multiple other people today, that there are more than one out there right now that have third-party reviews to prove what their results are. So what we're looking for is that grower is going to need to research their best available technology, have someone come out, do an onsite inspection, determine what is best for their unit operation, whether it's a retrofit or if it's a completely new installation, how many number of units they're going to require for their, all of the measurements of their facilities, whether they're dryer, drying facility, whether they're grower, whether they're nursery plants, starts. All of those numbers are, that bid has to come in. They have to determine what they want. Then we have to cycle our installation based on the plant cycles, right?
I understand. And you know, but you reached your time, so we understand the point.
Okay. So I think that, you know, our goal is all the same. Everyone's aiming for a resolution here. But I just want to make sure that everyone understands what goes into getting an installation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I believe that concludes public comment, correct? Anyone else online? No? Okay. So with that, I will close public comment. And bring it back to staff for any comments on the points raised during public comment? Okay.
Madam Chair. I would just want to make sure that the neighbor that spoke about the licensing process, that that is under Chapter 50, and that is managed through the CEO's office. And so those comments should be forwarded to the CEO's office.
Okay. Commissioner Park.
Yes. And on questions for staff, I have a question from Ms. Kim, just because I want to give you something to do today. But it's more than that. I know that when this hits the board, given the attorney-client relationship that county council has with the board, there'll probably be an opinion letter. And that's really none of my business to delve into that right now. But I've been curious all along. Can you describe the broad legal authority for us to go in and modify permits that have already been issued in order to require technology changes? It's something that's been a concern to me for a long time because I've been the one who's vocalized about my disappointment with permits that last forever because they never gave us a chance to revisit. And now we're making a big, bold move to revisit. That's wonderful. And I'm just wondering if there's some legal issue that maybe I'm not aware of. So can you give us just the broad legal authority for doing that? Or is that too dangerous?
Through the chair, Commissioner Park. Yes, there's certainly legal considerations that decision-making bodies should consider. I think you're referring to, you know, typically, individuals will vest to a permit. And there's several things a decision-maker can consider in order to protect those interests, one of which is a time period in order to make this adjustment to a new regulation. And then you can consider this is kind of regulating the operation rather than abolishing the, you know, the operation and preventing that sort of activity from occurring on that property. So what the commission's considering now is sort of adjusting the requirements rather than abolishing the use.
You know, if I felt that we were delivering this big thing to the public, which they've been asking for for a long time, and I'm very excited about it. I'm very excited about, staff's excitement about it. But if I felt that was there about a 10% chance it would survive the court system, then I would think that the public ought to know that. But I would, I guess I could safely assume that you'd tell us that, right? So there must be some degree of confidence in county council that this path that we're taking is likely to be successful.
Through the chair, Commissioner Park. County council's not in a position to make any policy calls. We're just providing legal advice as decision-makers decide how they want to proceed.
I'll ask a question. You had your opportunity.
Commissioner Park, we're in deliberations, so I'm hoping that we can get to our thoughts about the ordinance changes in front of us.
We're in deliberations? I thought we were in the area where we ask questions of staff, and they make their comments.
All right. Well, can we move to deliberations? Because there's quite a few things on the table. I'd like to move to deliberations now.
Okay. Well, I'm done with my questions, but I think that was the appropriate time to make it.
Thank you. Who else wants to begin on thinking through this and going through a hit list? Staff, maybe you want to help suggest how we tackle the changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it would be a good idea for us to bring up the PowerPoint and go through each of the issue areas where we don't currently have a recommendation from the PC. At the beginning of the slideshow, you saw a number of items that you already gave us your consensus on. So we'll go through these other items. And then step by step, we can talk about each one of those decision points and get comments from the commission or recommendations from the commission on changes you might want to make. Does that work?
Yeah. And I had one question, and it has to do with timing because I think there's a lot of pressure to get this thing through and back to the board for your March 18th board hearing. If the commission has changes to the ordinance language today, as, you know, after this next exercise, then we just basically have to ask you to make those as a recommendation to the board, but there's no chance for us to look at it again.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's not uncommon. We do that on many occasions.
All righty.
So let's bring up the PowerPoint.
Are you okay with that mic?
So I think the first item is the threshold. And just to remind the commission, option number one is that 7D over T is acceptable, but anything higher than 7D over T would be a violation. And then option two is that 7D over T is not acceptable. Seven would be a violation, and an operator would need to maintain below seven.
Okay. So let's pause that here and get comments from the commission. Who wants to start with an opinion? Commissioner Reed, thank you.
Somehow you knew it would be me. Yeah, with respect to the thresholds. You know, prior to the in-service I did with the nasal ranger, I was a little ambivalent on the seven. And if you look at the demands from neighbors, they would like no odor at property line. Okay. So when we did what was impactful to me, the nasal ranger, after I used it, touched it, looked at it, it seemed much less toy-like than had been my opinion prior to that. And I think it's an instrument you could probably at least get reproducible results with. What was much more apparent, though, is when I examined the reference odor samples that you had. Because from those samples, it was clear to me that seven was the lowest level at which you could smell it. Yeah, that was definitely cannabis, faint but recognizable, obvious. I went to the four, I could smell nothing. So- So that, to me, would seem to add weight to the, to the decision that I think the optimal end point would be below seven, with seven being a violation, as seven would be recognizable by neighbors just passing by or breathing. I think below that, a four or lower at property line, I don't think people would notice that. So in my opinion, after actually having experienced the nasal ranger and the reference samples, I think the appropriate limit would be below seven, with a reading of seven being a violation. And still throw in a little extra, I think we need to have a timely level of response at which time staff goes out and actually measures it. On-call would be best, I don't know if that's possible, but timely. You know, maybe something better than the next day, although same time, same conditions, next day, if that's all that could be achieved. But I'd like a more of an on-call level, but definitely below seven, not in seven with seven being clearly a violation.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney.
Well.
I think right now we're just, yeah, talking about the D over T.
Right, and I appreciate the comments of my colleague who knows the process as I learned it. I have a lot of skepticism about the nasal ranger's value in this whole process. I wish I had some confidence that I didn't gain when I actually used it. I think that honestly, it's more the result of my personal incapability of smelling anything that seemed, seemed to be related to our quest to get rid of the cannabis odor. So, you know, I would like to vote with our fellow commissioners and when they, when they express their views. But it's going to be very hard for me to accept seven as the final number. But given the technology that we're proposing to use, it may be the best we can do. So it's the best of a bad situation. I really want this revision to our ordinance to be effective. And so I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks about the D over T number of seven.
Commissioner Cooney, through the chair. There are two options. One is putting the threshold at seven, and the other, that you can't exceed seven. The other is you can't get to seven. And so I'm assuming option two is the one that you would prefer.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I want to be sure I understand that. So what she's saying is that it would be you cannot get to seven, but it's not setting it at four, which is the next dial down.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Park.
I would also vote for option two. One reason is because that's what staff recommends, and staff has really looked at this. Two, that's what the City of Carpinteria suggested in their letter. And I think that they've been a long-suffering entity that's not always been listened to, and it's nice to show that we are listening. And I think that a number of the concern neighbors have. I have some concerns about how this nasal ranger operation will work and what problems it may bring with it. I agree with Commissioner Cooney that what really matters here is that we're requiring the installation of carbon scrubbers. That's the main event. I think that we started with discussions in nasal ranger in the fall, and that's before the direction from board was to get down to business and get carbon scrubbers in. So I'll go with option number two. I don't think it matters all that much because I think the whole thing about the nasal ranger is not the biggest piece of this by any means.
Thank you. Can I ask Commissioner Cooney to share what was in the Carpentry letter? I thought they were advocating four.
I was just rereading the language of the letter of February 14th from Mr. Bobrov on behalf of the City of Carpinteria. And the sentence I have been looking at is, "The city recommends a more restrictive threshold than seven D over T. A more restrictive threshold would more closely adhere to the direction provided by the Board of Supervisors at their January 14, 2025 hearing, and would better protect neighbors from nuisance odors." I think that's the heart of what they're saying.
Director Plom, can I ask you to elaborate on what the board discussion was about that? I mean, they didn't offer a different number. You had this seven as an option two in this, in this language, or did this get developed at the PC level?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is something we developed at the PC level. They asked us to develop a threshold and a way to test, so the board hasn't weighed in on it yet.
Okay.
The board will be weighing in on the 18th of March.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like we have two with option two. I think what we want to kind of do is go through these things and get a straw vote on each, right?
Right.
So I heard three with option two.
That's what I heard.
Three, yes. Commissioner Martinez?
It's going to be four. I'm going to weigh in for option two. I'm going to rely heavily on staff. They're the ones who are working within this thing and trying to make it happen, and I can appreciate that effort.
Okay, I'm going to be maverick and say no because I want it lower, but you got four. So I think that that would be it for the option two support, correct? Four, and I'll say no for just.
Okay, can we go back to the PowerPoint for our next?
Yes.
I want to ask you to clarify something on that number. The nasal ranger has settings, right?
Correct.
And there's seven, and then what's the next lowest one?
Four.
Right, so in essence, and that's how it was described by staff and in the slides, that when you're saying it cannot go up to seven, you're basically requiring a four. So let's not get lost in this, oh, I want a four, not a seven. You got a four, this is a four.
Essentially, I think that's correct.
Okay, our next item.
Okay, so on this item, I think we're just looking for a head nod that the general parameters for hardship extensions are acceptable.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I would like to talk about this a little bit more, just the hardship extension process. I guess that's options decision-makers. So I agree with those justifications. Is there anyone who does not agree? Your light's on, but you agree, right? Okay. Okay, so you've got that consensus.
Okay, so decision-maker for hardship extensions. And again, the options are director-level decision, appealable to the board, planning commission decision, appealable to the board, or straight to the board.
Okay, Commissioner Reed.
I would say straight to the board. If it comes to us, we make a decision, it's going to get appealed no matter what. So why not cut out the middleman, save time for the people that are asking for relief, and have that, after the initial, go directly to the Board of Supervisors.
All right, Commissioner Park.
I respectfully disagree. I don't like things that go straight to the board because it gives the board too much business to do. They've got all sorts of things to do on budgets and this and that. And looking at 17 different extension requests is going to seem to them, they'll say, why didn't the planning commission do this? And that's because we had an ordinance that didn't let the planning commission do it. And so I, now, on the other end of the scale, you can just bypass everyone and make it go to the director and make it unappealable, which is appealing to me, except that I believe it's worthwhile to come to the planning commission at some stage, not because we're any wiser, that's doubtful, but because it allows a public hearing, and then the public can participate. And I think when the public participates, we do make wiser decisions. I thought we had an example of this kind of thing when we did the Strauss Wind Energy hearing a month or two ago, and I thought it was well-handled by staff, and the planning commission had useful observations to make, and it was a successful thing. So I see that type of thing going on. So I don't want it going straight to the board. I don't want it to go only to the director. I'd like it to go to the PC at some stage.
Okay, it sounds like option two. How about Commissioner Martinez and Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make clarification. Did Commissioner Park say he wanted the director to be able to make the decision, and then that could be appealed to the PC? Or did you just want to go straight to the PC?
I should have been more clear on that, because when I looked at this, I didn't like any of the three.
Okay.
I think that what we traditionally have, and it's tried and true model, and we have it in all sorts of things, is the director makes a decision, then it can go to the planning commission, okay? I see no reason to send it directly to the board. I see no reason to send it directly to the planning commission. I think this is something that the director should weigh in on. And we have the benefit of staff, having considered this. So what I want isn't actually any of those three. It's a combination of one and two, I guess.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Park, this slide is not dealing with the appeals. This is, the first extension is appealed by this decision-maker. The second extension then would go to the board. That's what that says.
This is the initial decision. I think what I'm hearing is.
Oh, I understood, and that's what I said.
Yeah, so we want, what I'm hearing from Commissioner Park is the director would make the initial decision on the extension request that's up to 12 months. That decision could then be appealed to the planning commission. We could make that non-appealable, the planning commission's decision non-appealable. Or we could make it appealable to the board. That's a call that the planning commission can make, a recommendation the planning commission can make. But I think we tried to sort of separate out the initial decision from where the decisions could be appealed to. But it makes sense to have the conversation together, so that's fine. But we have a thought here by Commissioner Park and a thought by Commissioner Reed that we could explore.
I'm glad that we're clarifying that because it doesn't comport with the PowerPoint presentation, but I'm waiting for staff to. Do we need to take a small break?
Yes. Madam Chair, could we just take a minute?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that.
So...
I forgot what the question was. Bring us back.
It, what we're talking about now is when somebody comes in for an extension. So I just want to step back for a minute. Growers have 12 months, basically, from the date this ordinance is enacted, or a little longer if, for some reason, the Coastal Commission doesn't take action, within that 12 months. Then they have the option to come in and get a 12-month extension if there are clear, justified reasons that we can verify that they can't get the equipment, or they can't get the power. So that has led to this one 12-month extension. And what we're hearing, what I've been hearing so far from the Planning Commission is that, there's some different opinions, but from Commissioner Park, what I heard is, the Director would make the decision on an extension, and then that could be appealed to the Planning Commission, and potentially stop there. But there is, we have something on our slide here that talks about the possibility of adding a safety valve, that for, for some reason, they, they still can't do it in three years, they could go to the Board and ask for another extension. And we, we included this option as a safety valve because we have heard from SCE that it's possible that it could take a few years to get the power that's necessary for some of the equipment to these properties. We do have somebody from SCE on the line, but we included that safety valve based on the comments that we heard from SCE.
Hmm. When were those comments offered to you guys? Because we've been asking about that.
Probably between hearings.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know we've been asking about that factor. Okay.
So that's, that's a secondary possibility. If the Commission would like to have that safety valve added, we can include it, but it only goes to the Board. It goes straight to the Board.
That's number three.
That's number three.
Okay.
Or, no, no, because we, these slides aren't set up the way we're talking about it.
Okay.
It is an option that is in, that we can provide, and it is somewhere on one of our slides, but just think of it as... Do you have something to add, Mr. Wilson? Oh, number three is what the Board originally directed.
Which is, for a third extension, it goes...
No, no, the Board, I don't want to confuse you. The Board initially said all decisions go to them.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have come back with some options, because the other Board members suggested that we develop some options for consideration that wouldn't be just something going straight to the Board. So right now, I think what I want to understand is, one, who should be the decision-maker on the first extension request? And right now, we have, Commissioner Reed thinks the Board, and Commissioner Park would prefer Director, and then an appeal to the PC, stopping there.
Okay.
I'd like to just get feedback from the rest of the Commission, just on that one issue.
Yeah.
But, Commissioner Reed?
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
I don't know that I said the first request should go to the Board. I think I said the first request, if it's for a well-defined cause, like no equipment, no electricity, go to you, but for a short term.
Oh, you...
Then I said...
Yes.
If there's an appeal, it would go to the Board. But whatever system we use, I can live with. I just want to make sure, do whatever we can to ensure, like what all too often happens, that the approval process for the extension, given appeals, et cetera, wind up being a lot longer than what the original extension would have been.
Yeah.
I mean, we get played that way so often. I don't want the approval of the appeal to wind up taking a year, or two years, when the original extension would have only been one year.
Right.
So. But, so I'm back to, initial through the Director.
Okay.
I'd rather it not be appealable. And then, second, if it needs to go to somewhere else, I could live with it coming to us, or with the Board, but, like I said, I just don't want to get, I'd rather not get mired in a process going to be going back and further than getting appealed. We'd do something to streamline it.
Right. Okay, so what I heard there is, it would almost be, and I hate to use the word, tiered approach, but what I'm hearing Commissioner Reed say is that the Director could approve an extension for some smaller period of time that would not be appealable. If they wanted to go beyond that period of time, then that decision would be made by the PC or the Board?
I can live with us. I'd like the Board, but I think Commissioner Park made a good point. As long as we don't get mired down with the 17 of them, he said would be going to the Board. Somebody has to.
Right. And so the second would be PC. Final, PC, final, not going to the Board. And then...
What do you mean, final?
Like, a decision that the PC is final, no appeals.
Is that what he meant?
I never said, I don't believe I said that, but that...
It's just a question.
Can we do that and not have it appealed?
I, I asked counsel, and we thought we could, is make a Planning Commission decision final, but she can verify that.
Seems a little dictatorial to me.
There's nothing, through the chair, Commissioner Reed, there's nothing in our, the coastal zoning ordinance, for instance, that requires actions by the PC to be appealable to the Board. It is typically what we do, and so what people expect, so that can be a consideration for you. But I didn't see anything in the coastal zoning ordinance that would require an appeal to the Board.
Okay, I would, I would yield to the opinions of my fellow Commissioners on that one.
Well, Commissioner Park, what did you think about that? Do you want to have the appeals stop at the Planning Commission on that?
You know, I, I wouldn't, because the Board's going to make the decision on this ordinance. They're, they're the ones who enact the ordinance. And I think we should lay out a complete, obvious, reliable procedure that we've used forever, and that is Director determination, then PC, then the Board. And since the Board did say in their board letter, the Board to approve all extensions requests directly, okay, I don't think they really mean that, because I've heard from the fourth floor, it's not a Brown Act violation, I'm not saying who, and who spoke to who, that, save us, don't, don't send it directly to us. And I think we could go Director, PC, Board. And if the Board doesn't like that, when they get this at the ordinance, which they're going to get in a few weeks, they can say, no, stop at the PC, or throw away the PC, whatever they want to do.
Skip the PC, right.
But at least, at least you've laid out something that you've always done in every other kind of thing, and we haven't reinvented the wheel, and we won't have, I'm going to mix my metaphors, we won't have the tail wagging the dog at this hearing right now, going on and on about how exactly the extension requests work, when we keep celebrating getting rid of anything but carbon scrubbers. There you go.
Okay, so we have two opinions there. Commissioner Cooney?
I have, I understood my fellow Commissioners correctly. We would have an initial request from an applicant to, to get an extension up to 12 months. Let's assume they, they asked for 12 months, and that's granted. Then there's no problem, I guess, because it goes through. The Planning Commission gets involved if the Director says, no, I can't grant that because of your track record, or, or whatever. Then it would go to the Planning Commission, and I think that ought to be the, the end of the trail for that applicant. So I would not give an appeal from the Planning Commission to the Board, but of course, the applicant, the disappointed applicant, has other legal remedies that they could follow.
So you are, extension by Director to PC, and it ends. Okay. Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah, I, I actually like that recommendation of just, I mean, I really don't, I really think option three is not even irrelevant, because the way it stands right now, if the Director grants the extension, they go, they can, they can appeal the extension to the Board of Supervisors. And then the second one, and if you ask for an extension beyond that one, then it has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. So on either of those two occasions, the way it's written right now, the Board is involved. I do like the circumstance where you have the Directors making the initial extension. If that is appealed, then it would go to the Planning Commission, and that would basically be the appeal of the Director. I think it's much more efficient that way. I would just iterate that I had my concerns, I do have my concerns about the timing of when you're going to request these extensions. And I'd ask, and I know the Director has indicated that that can be recommended to the Board of Supervisors when this is put in front of them, which is, when do you file your request for an extension, the first time, the initial one? Do you file it after or before? It has, I recommend it be before any period of time of, of the initial compliance. And in regards to the extended extension, initial extension, you know, I made my comments known about that one, too. So, yeah, I do, I do like that hybrid of changing out the Board for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez, I, I think what I heard is, you wanted to make clear in the code that any extension request must be received by the county prior to the expiration of the effective date of the ordinance or adoption by the Coastal Commission.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
And if we're, and if we're changing the Board out, from the Plan, the Board out in place of the Planning Commission, then basically, the, you know, the 90 days, we talked about that, you know, my clarification, that I would say 90 calendar days, and that obviously would become before us, and one of our calendared agenda items. And, yeah. And that would mean, if we do accept that hybrid, we would take out paragraph F3, is my understanding.
So we, we'll, I'll have to look at it, but assuming you're correct.
Yeah, because that's where it says, the Director's actions on a hardship extension may be appealed to the Board of Supervisors. We would be modified to say the Planning Commission.
Correct, based on that recommendation.
Thank you.
So I think we have yet to hear from you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, before you go on, I just want to, I think, I want to clarify what Commissioner Martinez is saying. So on that first extension, the language could be amended in the ordinance to say that the applicant shall submit in writing 90 days, 90 calendar days prior to the expiration of, prior to the 12-month implementation.
Effective date.
Yeah, prior to the effective date. That's what I meant to say, is that the applicant shall submit in writing a request for an extension to the 12-month implementation date, 90 days, 90 calendar days ahead of that.
Whatever dates the, the staff comes up in regards, I just want to make sure that the initial request for an extension is before the expiration of that initial 12-month period of time. And you, you guys will have reforms and all that, and they have to submit it. And we know that in regards to the second one, that there's already 90 days in there. So I'm just saying, the, the second extension would have to be 90 calendar days at least in regards to that. And, and you guys have your procedures in regards to that, you know, and making it, making the administrative requests be in writing and so forth. I'll leave that to you.
I might have a hybrid idea here, but, and, and I might be the only one, so it may not matter at all, but I'm concerned about the 90 day before the 12-month, you know, deadline arrives. I think that these growers should do, if they have an idea that they aren't going to make it in 12 months, they should ask for that six months before that 12-month period. And if everybody's going to say, oh, well, we don't know because we haven't checked out, these growers have to know whether they're going to be able to get equipment or something, six months before that date. I mean, they should be looking at getting carbon scrubbers now. It's clear this is going to happen. So I'm not really comfortable with waiting for the 90 day before the 12 month. I'd rather it be six months.
So you, you would go with 180 days?
Yeah. And I, and it's for their own good, because that 12, the neighbors have, have waited enough. And so for 90 days, and then an extension, and then the extension process is going to take a while, whether, you know, we or the Board decides to have it go to, through you, then to us, and then to the Board, that's adding on four months to this, you know, implementation. And so I don't think we should do that. Secondly, I don't, from what I'm hearing from the fourth floor, I really think that it should just go straight to the Board. Director and appealable to the Board. So I'm not on either one of these two twos. Sorry.
That's okay.
But, and if they don't like that, they're going to have to hassle that out. I, I am only expressing that because I've had very clear direction from my elected official that these appeals for on extensions are going to be, you know, they're not going to be handed out lightly. And it's been very clear to me that the Planning Commission is, may be perceived as unnecessary in this appeal process moving forward. So as much as I theoretically agree totally with Dr., with Dr. Park, Dr. Park at the end of the table, for this particular case, given the climate that we're in, I'd say Director approval, and then straight to the Board.
Okay.
So you have...
So we have three options.
Yes, you have an unorganized conclusion.
And I have a question of Ms. Kim.
Yeah.
Which I think is appropriate when we're in deliberations, if we're bringing up new ideas, that we are able to access County Council's sage advice.
Of course.
Good, thank you. And as we've gone over before, the Board makes the ultimate decisions on whether engaging in an action that might cause liability for the county, and it receives advice from County Councils, sometimes in executive session, and in, in confidential board letters, correct? But the Planning Commission doesn't operate that way with County Council. I've, I've never had a closed session with County Council, or received an opinion letter. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I'm concerned about any process that ends with the Planning Commission, because that has the Planning Commission making a decision that might expose the county to liability, but without the full benefit of County Council's good work, which you do have with the Board. So I think it's important it ends with the Board. How it gets there, I've stated my, my preference, and I've also heard from elected officials, but I, I think it's got to end with the, the Board, not the Planning Commission.
Okay. Was that a question, or?
Through the chair, Commissioner Park, yeah, I wasn't quite sure where the question was, but you're right, when, when items go before the Board, there is often a confidential advisory role. Certainly, we encourage any Commissioners to call County Council if they'd like to discuss legal issues ahead of the hearing, but we don't routinely provide that kind of advice.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have three variations. So we're looking for is maybe like a straw vote, or consensus on these three variations, so we can get to a recommendation to the Board. So I'm going to run through them, and then we can take a straw vote on each one of them, so we can get, reach a consensus.
Okay.
The first one is, Director takes the initial action, it's appealed to the PC, and then appealed to the Board. We're just, we're only talking about that first extension after the initial 12 months. The second option is, it goes to the Director for initial, and then it gets appealed to the PC, and that's final action. And I, I think I'm going to do a hybrid of what Commissioner Cooney and Commissioner Martinez says, which is that adds that 90 day prior to that 12-month implementation, that they have to submit in writing. It could go with any of them, but that, we do want the Planning Commission to weigh in on that 90-day written ahead of time. Okay, keep it separate. The third, the third variation is...
No, don't bother. I'll vote with one of those.
Okay, because we do need to talk about, you did add 180 day.
The six-month thing, can we, can we put the timing on these application filings, like, in a separate straw vote?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
So we'll talk about the options first, then we can talk about the timings for filing.
Okay.
So just options. One, Director initial, PC appeal, then Board appeal. Number two is an initial action by the Director, and then appealed to the PC, and that's final action. And then the, the last one was, Director does initial action, and then that's appealed to the Board. So those are three variations.
But what I'm saying is, I'm going to withdraw the third one. I was the only one that had that. I'll vote for one of the others, so at least you have a...
Okay, so the third one's no longer an option. So we're only looking at two options. One is the traditional path, which is Director appealed to the PC, and then appealed to the Board, or the alternative, which is, the Director makes the initial action, and it's appealed to the PC for final action.
Great.
So let's get a consensus on the first one, which is the typical path, which is Director appealed to the PC, and then appealed to the Board.
Okay, so who's in favor of that? Oh, no.
I think I'll go with that one, because I'm not comfortable with the option two.
Your mic.
I will go with the, the traditional path, because I'm not comfortable with two, that I'll explain.
I'll go with that path, too.
My, my preference was, and is, option two.
I was with just the, the Director giving the extension, and then there's one appeal, so that would, I don't care who it goes to, but I think it was going to go to the Planning Commission. That's one I was in favor of. Yes.
But the question is whether it stops at the Planning Commission, and then continues on with the Board.
I'd, I'd rather it stop at the Planning Commission, and if it's not the Planning Commission, on the Board, then, no, I'd rather it stop at the Planning Commission. But I do have one, one question of inquiry, which is, there, there was a concern from the public, which is, okay, how does the public know to appeal? The Board, the Director makes a decision. How does any... How does anyone know how to win that, hey, there's a decision out there that needs to be made, that I want to appeal?
Commissioner Martinez, through the chair, time extensions like that would be noticed.
Okay. In like a newspaper or whatever, okay.
Within 300 feet of the property as well.
So I think you have a three-two, correct? Okay.
And then, Madam Chair, if we could address the timing of filing for that extension request.
So, yeah, there are two options. One is three months, the other is six months.
Does anybody want to weigh in on that? I'm the only one who came up with a six-month.
I like six months.
Okay. Fisher, Park?
I'm going in the opposite direction. I don't really care that much, but I think that I don't want to see people, I don't want to see the process stall, because somebody is on their, on their way, getting there, and then there's some last-minute problem with PG&E or whatever. So I think three months, six months is, is too big a lead time, frankly. If you can't make it, you can't make it, and the Director will deal with it, and we will probably never hear about it. But if you make it three months ahead of time, or six months ahead of time, I think you're going to cause some problems.
Hmm, I'm confused about that, but, so.
Yeah, I think, just if I can summarize what I'm hearing is, it's possible that a grower could be going down the line and thinking that they're, everything's going to line up, and they're going to have all their equipment, and they're going to have their power, and at the, you know, within 30 days of, of the extension, or I guess within 30 days of the first 12 months, they could think, oh, I don't have my X, or I, SCE said there's going to be a delay, or, and so that could prohibit some, that could create a problem. And I, I hadn't thought about that, but I think there's some merit to that. That if we require, if we mandate it, that they have it, that they have this foresight about something they might not be able to know, and request this extension early on, they could be prohibited from getting an extension when they really need it, kind of at the final hour. So I, I understand why Commissioner Park made that comment.
Well, but, I mean, couldn't the language include that the extension request has to be filed six months or three months in advance, unless, you know, extenuating circumstances are provided by the applicant? Just give you a little bit of wiggle room that it can come in later.
So, so Madam Chair, the other thing to consider is, the way the ordinance is written is it's, it's effective 12 months from Board adoption or Coastal Commission certification. So if we pull back the requirement for submitting a request for extension, it could be coterminous with the time that this Coastal Commission is still reviewing it. So we're talking about that 12-month implementation time. So I, staff's recommendation is that you, you move that closer to where the effective date is. So it's, we're asking for 90 days before the effective date comes in. So if we pull that back to 180 days, then there could be problematic with it still being under review with the Coastal Commission. So I think our recommendation is that you move it closer to the effective date. We're asking for prior to, so that way it gives staff enough time, and it's Director level, so we don't need as much lead-in time to take action as we would if we were going to a public hearing. So a three-month or, no, and this is new, we, we're not proposing it. So this is something that we're introducing that we haven't proposed. Our current proposal is they can, whenever in that 12-month time, they could request an extension. So, yeah. So we added it under that second option that we haven't got into yet. So this is a new provision, is adding this extension request. Our recommendation is not to do it in, within that 12 months.
Not to.
No, no, to not have a, to not have a timeframe.
The application deadline for the extension within.
And if you were, to make it shorter, to make it.
To, to put in a deadline, then it would be closer to the end of that 12-month period, because of the potential for something unforeseen happening that could be a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would just, I would just say to that, though, and, maybe I'm jaded in the profession I'm in, but if, if I really wanted to mess with the process, I would just make an appeal, file for a hardship two business days before, wait for an extension, because I know I'm not going to comply. I got 12, I hit the 12-month period of time. I know it's going to take at least three, four months to go through the process, and I just bought that time. And, and I mean, you're going to know if you're not going to have, in the energy companies, PG&E is notorious, for instance, when we install wells, we won't get that, we won't get connected for a year and a half down there. But if it's a supply chain, or we are not going to get the equipment for onsite, those are things that we're in charge of in regards to being the grower or the farmer, whatever, you're going to know about it. I mean, it's not going to be a surprise. It's just going to be, hey, I know that I contacted my supplier, and my supplier has told me that I'm not going to get this for another 90 days. You're going to know that in advance. So that's why, if it's going to be something of the sense of a hardship, I would think 30 days before the expiration of the 12-month period of time should be sufficient to know where you're at. I mean, you know, if it's Southern California Edison we're talking about, they can promise the, they can say, we're going to be there in the next six months. It doesn't mean anything, really.
Yeah. So, so what I'm hearing is, we could do 30 days before the expiration of the 12 months.
If you want it closer.
If you want it closer, okay.
You're going to know.
But can your staff really turn anything or anything around at 30 days? I'm sorry, but I'm being honest. 90 days I could go with, but 30 days is pretty tight.
Yeah. Whatever works.
I think the question would be if we wanted the appeal to be heard before the end of the 12 months, that would.
That would be my hope. If you're still pondering.
Yeah, you'd need, you'd need 90 days at least. Because I would have to make a decision, then there's got to be 10 days to appeal it, and then there's a process of bringing it to a hearing. So, yeah.
90 days at least, not really 120 days, because now we've got three steps, you, the PC, and the Board. That's, that was our three, right?
So, and you're not really giving.
We just made it so much more complicated than, you know, I'm sorry. I, I know the world wants it to be really, really fast, and I'll say it again, government is not that fast. It's not that fast because the public wants us to think this through and try to have everybody have a chance to pick at it. So I, I don't know what the solution is. I, I'm not that married to one or the other, but I think 90 minutes is going to cut it short for a three-step process, and 30 days is impossible.
If you want, if the Commission wants to have a timeframe where they have to submit their request prior to the extent, the expiration of the effective date of the ordinance, I wouldn't go longer than 90 days. And that's, that would be my recommendation.
And that would allow Director, PC, and Board?
Well, at a minimum, it will, no, it, it won't.
That's just Director.
Mm-hmm, and probably, we could hopefully get to the PC, but it will not get to the Board. And, and so the Board may end up deciding, no, we want everything come straight to us, because it's, it's more efficient. They might want that. I don't know what the full Board's going to say, but they, the full Board did say they wanted options.
Okay. Commissioner Roy, Commissioner Reed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, in terms of the, the length of time, the deadline, in order to apply, I would be in favor of a shorter period. Having myself been in positions when I was in another industry, of having ordered manufacturing or analytical, scientific analytical equipment, supposed to arrive at a certain deadline, 30 days before, a couple of weeks before, you get a notice it's not showing up. So my question would be, if you put a long advance, like six months or 90 days, what happens to somebody, they find out it's going to fall through, the supply chain will fail them, and it's 30 days out? Have they therefore lost their ability to ask for an extension? So I'd like it to be a little closer, a little shorter, on the short end, not the six-month end, you know, 90 days or perhaps, you know, a little bit less.
I mean, here's another thought, is that it, the, the extension request gets submitted, and it could be 12 months from the date of the submittal of the request. That's what gets granted. And the appeals could be working out through that entire process. But if the Board ultimately agrees to it, that's the start date of that 12-month period. You submit, you request it, or it's just 12 months from the date of the effective date of the ordinance. We could keep it simple. It's like 12 months from the effective date of the ordinance. All the appeals worked out in that 12 months, but they've got that 12 months, and that's it. So then we don't have to worry about all of this advanced notification and.
Right, but the, but the appeals are possibly pending. They file for an, an extension 15 days before the 12-month calendar date, and then they're in process for three to six months, getting through the appeals, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And then, but, the 12-month date would start from the complete, so let's say they submit. They submit five days before the effective date of the ordinance, or they submit three months before the effective date of the ordinance. The 12-month period is from the effective date of the ordinance going forward, no matter when they submitted that request for extension.
Oh, okay.
And the appeal process can be worked out in that 12-month period. That extension that they requested, up to 12 months. So that would simplify it, I would say.
And not unnecessarily extend growers' ability to abuse the timeframe.
Correct.
Commissioner Park?
And let's remember, we already established an hour plus ago, that it's at no more than 12-month extension. It's not automatically 12 months. And the decision-maker at the end of the appeal process, okay, can say, you know, it's been pending for a while, you've had more time, and we, we think you're kind of gaming the system, and, and we're going to give you three months. Okay, so it doesn't have to be 12 months. So for us to keep measuring 12 months is sort of a fallacy.
Yeah, that's the max.
And I think in operation, just knowing how things work, and then knowing the two people sitting here, Ms. Leyva and Mr. Briggs, I think that, that they will know every single grow and know its process. They'll know it by heart, they'll have a spreadsheet, they'll have Gantt charts, and they'll have all that stuff, and they'll know where it's going. It's, it's not going to be a surprise. They'll know who's progressing. And so I think they'll be able to move it along pretty well. And let's also remember the kinds of things that can happen. We rely on power lines coming into carpenteria, which take a somewhat treacherous route, because they all go through the Zaka and Thomas Fire Scars, which did burn up some power lines and could have taken out carpenterias. And, and we have battery projects that we approved that will be the source of some of that power. So it's, there's things that can happen, and do happen, and have happened, that can be catastrophic, that can really change things. So having that flexibility is good. But, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Cooney, do you have one more?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to remind everybody, I started the discussion today, several hours ago, with concern that this process could be extended. And the public is looking for a quick adoption of this ordinance and putting it into effect. And so I want to err on the side of, of forcing, if there is an appeal, an early dismissal of that appeal, or whatever the system is. But I think we, we'd be closing our eyes if we said, no, no appeal, you know, so that's, that's what I've stuck on. If there's any discussion of that, I'm happy to participate. But let's get by this and, and get the word out that you better get your scrubbers or whatever other concerns are.
Right. So I, I think, just to kind of bring this component to a close, we had three votes that it would go Director, PC, Board, our standard process. And what we will say in that code is that, you know, the submittal of your request for your extension can happen anytime in that period up to the point the ordinance is effective. And then you have 12, up to 12-month extension up to, from the effective date of that ordinance.
So if they wait, then they're.
Yeah.
They're chipping themselves out of months.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. But any kind of appeal process would not eat, would not extend that potential extension beyond a maximum of 12 months. So I think I heard support for that. Okay.
Yes.
Great. The next question is, and I'm guessing some of you may want to take lunch at some point, but, do you, does the Planning Commission want a safety valve for the Board to give a second extension if some unforeseen problem were to occur? If we had a fire, if something happened and power was not available to carpenteria for some reason, the Board could grant a second option for an extension? But it would go straight to the Board?
Okay, that's a very succinct question, so Commissioner Park?
I don't care if there's a second request or not, I don't want it to go just to the Board. I don't see the sense of that. Why, if something is a calamity, or it's taking too long, that now that goes directly to the Board? I want that uniformity of process of it going to the Director first.
Okay.
So whether it's a second request, or third, or fourth, I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Cooney, it's got to stop. I, I think, one request is enough.
Yeah, the Board might, I mean, we don't need that in there. It's not in the code currently. It was just an option that we wanted to give the Planning Commission.
This is a yes or no, right?
Yeah, it's like.
Do you want a second extension request?
Right.
Through the same process, we're assuming.
Right.
Commissioner Reed?
So the second extension, and what you're proposing, we go directly to the Board of Supervisors or?
I mean, if there was going to be one, that was the idea. But we don't have to build in the option for a second request. I think the, the community is probably wondering, like, is, what's going to happen to us if these people keep asking for extensions? But I think the reason we brought it up is because the information we'd received from SCE about the possible delays in bringing the appropriate level of power. But.
That may be a window you want to leave open, in the, in the event there's an extraordinary case beyond anyone's control, like SCE or something, but at the same time, I'm puzzled at what seemed like was going to be the easiest part of this process, having become the most baffling.
Commissioner Cooney?
I was just thinking, as a lawyer, admittedly, that if I used up my extension, and I go to my lawyer and say, SCE hasn't performed, he'd say, you're going to have to go to court and get an injunction against the county denying you the ability to install. So it's neither, regardless of the procedure the applicant comes up with, they're going to have the right in that extraordinary case, covered by, I hope, the rules about a second appeal. So if it's that kind of exception, you know, we can build it into the ordinance, or we can just leave it, but either way, it's going to extend the time.
Commissioner Martinez?
I think that's already built into the way it's written, because it says, any additional requests for extension. It's plural.
What's driving the sign?
I'm not sure which, which, where you're referring to.
On number two, it says hardship, and then the, and the last, second, second last sentence says, any additional requests for extension must be submitted 90 days prior to the expiration and approval, and approved by the Board of Supervisors. So if you grant an extension, and I want another extension to. and I want another extension to that extension, I have to submit it 90 days prior to. And it's plural, the way that the statute or the ordinance reads.
So Chair and Commissioners, I think, just to help Commissioner read it, it's becoming baffling. I think what we're looking for right now is yes or no to any other extensions. So we talked about the initial extension. So just yes or no, would the commission recommend to the board, even considering additional extensions? If it's a yes, then we can look at whether that's a plural yes or not. Maybe there you say, okay, you can have one extension, and the second one goes straight to the board, and that's it? Or... But I think what we're looking for is, is the Planning Commission even willing to consider recommending any other extensions beyond the first one?
What I'm saying is that I would just hold to what's already written in the ordinance, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, what's in the... What is being proposed today allows multiple extensions, but they all are going to the board. So the first one that we've all agreed upon goes to the Director, gets appealed to the PC, and gets appealed to the board. What we're asking now is, will there be a second extension?
Which is a excerpt from what's published in our packet.
And who does it go to?
So the first question is, do you want a second extension? The question after that is, who would it go to? So it's a two-part question. Do you recommend a second extension? And then the next part to that is, who do you recommend that going to?
I would say, in light of the way that the ordinance is written, I would say that it's fine. It's plural. Additional requests are included in there. It has to be submitted to the... Submitted to, I guess, the Planning Commission, or the board? No. Any additional expense, additional request for extension must be submitted 90 days to the... Prior to the expiration. I would just say it would have to be submitted to the Planning Commission. That's what I would be proposing. That's my proposal. Because that's what...
So that's a yes for a second extension and process to go to the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct, instead of the board.
And just to move this along, I'll agree with Commissioner Martinez.
Okay.
So Commissioner Martinez, you're okay then with the plural requests?
Yes, because we're talking about something... Yeah.
Okay.
We're talking about the unforeseen. We don't have a crystal ball in front of us.
And Commissioner Cooney, would you... You'd say yes to the request? So then, just for everybody then, the second request, yes, and it goes straight to the Planning Commission? And then it would be appealed from the Planning Commission to the board? So if we could just get a consensus on that statement? Yes to a second request? Yes to multiple requests? But they start the Planning Commission, and then they're appealed to the board after that?
Let's call that a mini motion, straw vote? Because Commissioner Park, do you want to discuss that? Are you ready to vote?
You know, I want each extension request to have a uniform procedure because it's understood by staff, and it's understood by the applicants, and it's something that we do all the time, which is Director determination, then PC, then Board. So for this endless... Well, on the third request, we'll go to the board, and then the PC, and then we'll go to the Boy Scouts. And, you know, just do it the same way each time, okay? I think that Commissioner Martinez reads it exactly right, that your initial thought had to have been, when you use the word "initial extension," that implies there would be others. And you have "additional," implies there would be others. So I can go with the others. It's going to be harder and harder to get them. And, you know, there is a remedy that the applicants would have, even if there's only one extension allowable. They can go to the board and lobby for an emergency ordinance to change the ordinance and deal with this problem of a fire or lack of power lines, or whatever. But why have them go through all that? It's probably just easier to get it to the board ultimately with additional extension requests.
Okay, I don't want a second extension request. I'll just vote against that motion.
Okay, so there's two... I think there's two options. Madam Chair. So first option is, keep any additional requests, standard protocol, Director, PC, Board. Or the second alternative is, any additional requests start at the Planning Commission. So that's what's before the Planning Commission. And then yours is, no second.
No second extensions.
So that's... Those are the three options.
Okay.
So if we could walk through straw votes on those?
I think what we have is two... We have one that's saying no, and two-two here. And I...
Just regular process.
Just going straight to the PC.
PC to Board, if I misspoke.
Yeah. So we are going to need to talk about how we might...
Summarize.
I guess my... I guess what I would say is, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Cooney and Commissioner Martinez to understand their thought process on it, of going straight to the PC. And that is to cut time out of the process for the extension? The second extension?
For me, that's definitely yes.
Okay.
In regards to it. Because if you have a... The way it reads right now, if you have... You have to submit it 90 days. That automatically implies that your initial extension is at least 90 days. And, you know, we're saying up to 12 months. So again, in my scenario, if I get an extension for 40 days, I'm automatically going to apply for a request for an extension of that extension because I have to submit it within 90 days. And then it gives... Well, I mean, in the scenario. Because it says 90 days within the ordinance. Well, I mispronounced it. No. It is 90 days, yeah.
I know. You're correct.
I'm using the math wrong. I'm saying if I'm submitting what...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're correct.
Four months.
I think we came to the conclusion that we weren't going to require people to submit 90 days before the effective date of the ordinance, because...
I'm talking about the way that it reads in regards to this right now. It says nine days prior to...
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, the second request. Yeah.
Second request. So I think that language needs to be worked in. But that's why I'm telling the element of time because I don't want it to go through six months, where I'm automatically getting really a six-months extension on my original extension. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
I see, I see. Yeah.
Commissioner Cooney?
Oh.
I would like to just set this piece aside for a minute and look at any other items that we may need the commission to weigh in on.
Well, it is 12:20.
So we could take a break?
How many more items do you have? Because I'm frankly losing it.
Let's just look to see what else we have. This is it. So this is it.
So what's the consensus? Do we have it in us? Should we take a break and have a Coca-Cola?
I guess, Madam Chair, you're the swing vote. So we have a two-two, and then no to any second extensions. So then the question is to Madam Chair, is there any additional information that you would need to support?
Nope. I don't want a second extension. Sorry, I'm going to be firm on that. You're just going to have to report a split vote and a committed chair to no second extensions whatsoever.
So I'm just wanting to see if I... If we could address Commissioner Cooney and Commissioner Martinez's concerns. And I might need 10 or 15 minutes to think about it, and talk with the team about it. And that way, we could get...
A four-one.
A four-one.
Can close up, yeah.
Yeah. So if we can take... If you want to grab lunch, that's fine. If you guys would rather just take a 10-minute break, and then we can come back, and you can be done, we'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, I like... Taking a 10-minute break.
Okay.
What's the consensus down there?
So Madam Chair, I'm running a separate operation over here. But we are in sync. She just doesn't know yet. We'd like to do a... We would like to do a 20-minute break. And the purpose for that is, we would like to come back with these decisions in a bullet point form on a slide so the commission knows what everybody's agreeing to. So could you give us 20 minutes to just synthesize where we are with the agreements? And then we'll come back in 20 minutes, plus or minus, and then...
Plus or minus is an important addition because I can just see you coming back after 20 minutes and saying, "I need a second extension."
But we will give it to you 90 seconds in advance.
I would suggest, in that instance, why don't we just take a lunch break? That gives you the ease. Instead of being on the crunch, come back with something that's quality, and no extensions beyond that.
Sounds good.
Okay. So we'll take an hour... I mean, should I bring you guys back a sandwich?
Yeah, we'll be back at 12.
All right. 1:20, got it. All right. 1:20, got it.
Okay, thank you. The room has thinned out. This is readjourning the meeting of February 19th of the County Planning Commission. And I think we're going back to staff for a summary of where we had stopped before a break. Mr. Briggs.
Yes. So, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, we're going to briefly walk you through the few items that we were asking you for input on today. And so this is not an exhaustive list that includes the items that were previously agreed upon. This is just the things that we were discussing today. And first off is the threshold. And we had four commissioners in the affirmative on option number two, which would mean that 70 over T is a violation. And operators need to keep the odor at the property line below 70 over T. We had one commissioner who wanted a lower threshold. So this was a four to one vote, I guess. And then we presented the commission with the types of hardship issues that may come up in hardship requests. And you all seemed pretty comfortable with that. That seemed to be unanimous. And then moving into the hardship extensions. So this is where we kind of got bogged down a little bit. In an attempt to address concerns of several commissioners, we wanted to clarify the language to include the operative date. So you'll notice that first bullet point there. A 12-month extension is available. A request is available from the operative date.
Can you explain what operative date means, sir?
Yeah. So, that was just so perfect. So we created this exhibit. Director Plowman gets 100% of the credit. So, the ordinance language provides for 12 months of implementation. And you see on the left-hand side, you've got your board action. And then you've got your initial 12-month implementation period. This is the freebie that everybody gets to implement their revised OAPs. The operative date for any extension request is at the end of that 12-month period. So the clock starts ticking at the operative date, at the end of the initial 12 months. If they request an extension at 11 months and 29 days, the operative date starts ticking at 12 months. Of the initial period or a future extension. And so let's say the appeal process, or let's say the request process takes a month. And then they appeal it, and it takes two more months. And now we've just added three months to the 12-month period. The clock is ticking that entire time. The 12-month extension that they're requesting has already begun, and we've already moved through three months of that 12-month extension. So, in other words, the clock doesn't stop. There's no pause in the clock. The clock keeps ticking. So if they get the extension, they've already used up three months of that extension, and now they have nine months because they've already, you know, gone through that three months. So, so you get 12 months, and then you get 12 months. And there are no delays in between. And we think that that captures the spirit of what you guys were getting at in your concerns about being able to appeal, and delay, and appeal again, and delay again. So that, in order to address that, we've developed this. And the clock just keeps ticking. So if you appeal, that's fine. You're eating up your own time rather than the neighbor's time.
Okay. This might be a time to ask if there are questions about that, but I'm not seeing any lights on. Maybe we're clear about that. Okay. All right.
And then for the hardship extension, it seemed like we landed on the classic decision-maker process, which is the director makes the decision. That's appealable to the planning commission, and then again, appealable to the board. And then additional hardship extensions. So your second extension, the first bullet point essentially highlights what we just discussed, where your 12-month period starts at the end of the previous 12-month period. And they just keep stacking. There's no delay in the 12-month period. And then we have some options. So the decision-maker, we could go with the standard process again for the second hardship extension. It could be director to the PC to the board. Or we could try to truncate that process by ending it at the planning commission, or by skipping the planning commission and going directly to the board.
So, Commission, Madam Chair and Commissioners, before we went on break, I think there was an agreement on that additional hardship extensions that there was a majority that said yes to additional hardship extensions. Where we went off the rails a little bit was that just the decision-maker. And so the same principle we're proposing applies to any additional hardship extensions. So, any additional hardship extensions, they will begin at the expiration date of that first extension. So the same principle we would apply to any additional extensions. The clock would start running at the expiration date of that first extension. So there wouldn't be a delay when somebody appeals and it stays the director's decision or whoever, and multiple appeals come in. So we're saying that same principle would apply here, is that if you file for an additional extension, that extension starts at the expiration of that first extension or subsequent extensions.
Okay. So...
Do you want the graphic?
And there's, no, actually, the next one. There is no limit on the number of extensions?
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, that's for the commission to recommend to the board. So we've, I think we've got to the point where additional extensions are allowed. If the commission wants to discuss number of extensions, that's within your discretion to discuss that, recommend to the board. I think where we were struggling with was what that process would be for additional extensions. Who would be the decision-maker? And then the appeal process.
Okay. I thought I voted, like, no extensions. Yes, I was the minority. I was the one. Okay. Okay. So we're trying to come to consensus on those last four bullets, right?
Well, the last three, at least.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Martinez?
So, so if somebody applies for this, you have the initial extension. Then they're applying for the second extension. There's something to change now because their application for that second extension is due when?
Ninety days prior.
It would be before the expiration of the first extension.
So if you gave them an initial extension of 12 months, and it's 11 months, 29 days, they can file for an extension. And whether it's granted or not, they filed for it. Then what happens after that 12-month period of time? I mean, they're in limbo, in a sense, because there hasn't been a grant by the director. They've applied in time. That's what I was trying to avoid by them applying earlier, so they know, hey, I don't have a second extension.
Do you want to respond?
Yeah. So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Martinez, that may be an argument for having the director be the initial, because the director can make those decisions pretty much over the counter within that 10-day period. The reason why we asked for a 90-day lead-in time in what we proposed to the board was if the board or planning commission was the decision-maker, we needed lead-in time to get to noticing and get to the decision-maker. So we would still recommend on any subsequent extensions that there be at least a 90-day lead-in time. So the applicant or operator would need to file for an extension 90 days prior to that expiration date of that first extension.
Okay. So we haven't changed that language of the ordinance. Okay. But I understand. We're just talking about who do you apply for initially for that second extension? If you, if there's an appeal, who does that go to? And does it go to the planning commission? And then if that planning, you want to appeal that one, then it goes to the board of directors? I mean, board of supervisors? Got it. Which I was saying, go to the director, then go to, go into the planning commission. That was what I was saying. Okay. And that's where we are.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, correct. So where we left off was we had two in support of standard appeal process, and then two in support of director, and then ending at the planning commission. The alternative is that we start at the director and then just go to the board. And then we did have another vote of just no other extensions. So that's the flavor. And we're trying to get to a consensus on this one matter so we can wrap it up.
Correct.
Just to help break the deadlock, I'm going to give you a ranked vote. Because I want to always, no matter what, start with the director and end with the board of supervisors. So my first choice is bullet point number two, decision-maker, director, PC, board of supervisors. My second choice is the bottom alternative, director and board of supervisors. My last choice is director and PC. That's not a choice at all that I want to make. I hope that helps.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I don't want the end decision-maker to be the planning commission. I don't want the final decision-maker to be the planning commission. So that lets out bullet three. I don't know that we can make a case for why the decision tree should be different with the additional hardship than the hardship. So I'll vote for director, PC, board of supervisors.
Well, in case it influences the other commissioners, if I, I'm sticking to my guns about no second appeal. But if I was going to agree to a second appeal, I'd go with this, the regular process, to try to keep it consistent with everything else, the director, PC, BOs. But I'm, I'm going to be contrary for the moment. Yeah.
I would go with Commissioner Park's recommendation, which is decision-maker, director, PC, board of supervisors. And then if hardship extension goes director, board of supervisors. That's not what you recommended?
You're saying the same thing for the additional hardship, the same process.
Then let me hear what you originally said. Because if I misinterpreted, others might have. Okay. My first choice is director, PC, board of supervisors. But I wanted to give you the benefit of what my second choice would be in case all the others were there. And my second choice would be director and board of supervisors. Because I always want to start with the director. I want to end with the board of supervisors. I prefer to have the PC in the middle because it is, using the chair's words, which I think are very good, a standard decision tree.
So you're saying your second choice is not about the additional hardship extension? You're just saying?
No. No, we're talking about the additional hardship extension.
Because we've already achieved consensus on the hardship extension. It's the regular process, the standard appeal process, right?
I'm either going for director, PC, or director, board of supervisors, just in the element of time.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
I'm fine. Whatever makes a majority and ends this issue, I'm voting for.
Commissioner Reed.
I would say since carpentry is in Commissioner Cooney's district, he stick his neck out, and then the rest of us can go with him.
We're getting further away. We're almost there. We were almost there at 311.
So I think if we can help, we can summarize, yeah, we can summarize that we have three votes to identify the decision-maker tree as for the additional hardship extensions as director, PC, board, the standard process.
And if they want to slim it down, then they have that prerogative.
Yeah. So, Jeff, do you want to talk about the multiple votes?
So, Madam Chair, can you give me three minutes? I'd like to confirm with, confer with the team to help set up a possible motion for you, the planning commission, to consider. We went through a lot of different things. This was the last item. So we're ready to move into motion deliberations. So I'd like to set it up, because I don't think we have a consensus on all of these items separately. So we may have to set up the motion in a specific way to get to an endpoint. So can you give me three minutes?
Can I ask a question after we do that? I'm just a little confused. You know, what, an hour and a half ago or two hours ago, it was a four to one vote to allow additional hardship extensions. That would seem to settle that. And now we've just had a vote on what would be the decision tree. And we have three people that voted for director, PC, and board of supervisors. One person that voted the other way, and one person that didn't vote yet. Or just said, I'll vote with the majority, which seems to be a three to whatever, to have it be director, PC, and board of supervisors. So are we overthinking this to keep taking breaks and setting up motions?
Chair, Commissioner Park, no. We want to be able to provide guidance to the commission to be able to make the motion on the entirety of the ordinance amendments. So that's why I'm asking for a three-minute break. So that way we can walk you through how to set up the motions. Because it's going to be a little bit different than what we normally do.
I understand that. It needs to be clean, and this has been complicated. There were a couple other items that were brought up this morning that don't really land in these buckets that, you know, that were continued to today, including sort of the notification of the neighbors. And Director Plowman had said during our Q and A that could be on the website. And then the other, there was one other item, we're all okay with nasal ringer, and we're not pursuing any other thing, and property line testing. So, I mean, those were other sort of superfluous comments. No, they weren't superfluous. They were tangential comments to what we've discussed in our hit list. So can anybody think of anything else that we discussed that we want to forward to the board?
If I could, I wouldn't tell you.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Take a break for three minutes. Yeah, absolutely. Take a break for three minutes.
... provide some guidance to the commission as far as how to move through the ordinance amendments package. So your resolution is set up to recommend to the board the proposed changes or the proposed ordinance amendments. However, based on the hearing today, there's been discussions, as on the slide, other items that the commission hasn't reached a consensus on. So my recommendation is that we walk through each one of these items where there's a dissenting vote, and we do a vote, a motion and vote on each one of these items separately. Then once that is done, then we take a vote on the balance of the ordinance amendments as proposed, because there is consensus on everything else that we've presented. So then that's, that would be the last motion, is to recommend to the board to adopt the ordinances as proposed, and then with these revisions that we've taken out separately. Then we'll amend the resolution and put these items separately as callouts, as the planning commission recommends, the ordinance as proposed with these revisions.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. You want to walk us through it?
So we will start with the first bullet, which is the D over T threshold. So we would look for a motion to establish a threshold, which would be the odor being below 70 over T.
So moved.
I'll second. I seconded first.
Yeah, Cooney's the second, yeah.
Just didn't have my mic on.
All right, so roll call on each one of these for clarity. Okay.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Chair Bradley?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, then, Madam Chair, the next item is the hardship types. I believe there was a consensus on all that, so we'll move that to the balance of the ordinance amendments. And then, so the next item is the hardship extensions. So we're looking for a motion to amend the ordinance to allow for a 12-month extension from the operative date of the implementation period, and the decision-maker being the director, and then appealed to the PC, and then appealed to the board of supervisors.
So moved.
I'll second that. Out of order. Commissioner Martinez, Commissioner Cooney, did you have comments on that motion?
No, I don't.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
No.
Chair Bradley?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, so then the last item, and we may want to separate these, so let's just do, we'll separate these. So the last one is to allow for additional extensions from the first one, and then they will start at the expiration date of the previous extension.
So moved.
Second, down there?
Second.
Will we read seconds?
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, the last item we'll do is the decision-makers on the additional extensions would be director, would be the initial decision-maker, the PC, and then the board of supervisors. Would be the appeal process, standard appeal process.
So moved.
I'll second.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
So I voted against the hardship extension. Should I even vote on this? Okay. It's process not substance. Okay.
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
No.
Chair Bradley?
No.
Motion fails. Two to three.
So we'll just move it down. So the next motion would be that the decision-maker would be the director, and then appeal to the PC as the final decision-maker.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
No.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Chair Bradley?
No.
Motion fails. Two to three.
So, so moving down the decisions, the decision-maker being the director, and then appealed to the board of supervisors.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Park?
No.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Chair Bradley?
Aye.
I think it still fails two to three.
Yeah.
Yes.
I can just see this hitting the fourth floor. Four, five, six, three.
So, Madam Chair, the result of, and so then...
Results of our poll.
So let's, we'll get back to that. We, do you want a motion on the balance of the proposed amendments? And then we'll come back to the outcome of what that last vote was.
I'm willing to make the motion on the balance of the recommended proposals. In favor.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioner Cooney, if that motion could also incorporate the findings, the secret findings and all the other findings that's outlined?
Is it? You want that read into the record?
You could say as shown on the screen, with the, with the understanding as revised by the earlier motions.
Okay. Yes, these are the recommendations of staff as discussed by the commission. I move that we adopt these as stated in the, on the screen at this point. And what was the other thing?
So the last, the last bullet is adopt a resolution recommending approval, and so that's as revised by the commission with the earlier motions.
So, the motion includes adopting the recommendations as stated, subject to the changes that were made in the voting just now.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll call that.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Chair Bradley?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, so going, thank you. So because the vote on decision-makers failed, the resolution will be revised with these bullet points that we, the votes that we went through. The resolution will include allowing additional extensions, because there was a majority to allow additional extensions, but it will be silent on the decision-maker. So then the board agenda letter will note that the planning commission didn't reach a decision on that item, and then, and then move it to the board to consider the decision-makers for any additional extensions.
Yeah, good.
So with that, Madam Chair, that concludes our business on this matter today.
Okay. I really want to thank staff, because this was complicated, and it was complicated to us, and I know it was very complicated to you, and I know you've been doing it at breakneck pace. So thank you, thank you for the training on the nasal ringer, and all of the outreach, and all the phone calls. So, and with that, I think we adjourn our meeting today. Let the board have on it. Thank you.
Next week.